Yes.
All right. We're good here, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Good morning, all. I'd like to call the village council work session meeting, June 25, 2020, 9:00 AM, to order. As shown, we have a full council in quorum to our dialing-in remotely. That would be Councilman Martha Leese and myself. And it looks like we have, I don't have a full screen of everyone, so I can't see your beautiful face, Kim, but I see everybody there. So, thank you for all being here. First up, we have the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, additions, or additions?
We do, but before we do that, Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion to allow you and Bob to participate remotely?
Absolutely.
All right. So, I make that motion?
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Am I still not voting? You got the deal?
You're still not voting.
Okay. All right, so the motion passes. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And then, if it's okay with the rest of council, I'm going to turn over the helm to Mayor Pro Tem, Kim Vanderburg, since she is there, and I will just be on the sidelines. And maybe the meeting will go a little faster, right, Kim?
Maybe.
His microphone still works.
We can mute him, right?
Yeah, everybody there, and all you guys having all their information at hand, that may be a little easier.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Yes. So, Joe, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to allow Mayor Pro Tem, Kim Vanderburg, to take over the meeting on my behalf, even though I will still be here attending remotely. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so any changes to the agenda? I have a couple. So, you want me to go first? If we can move under items of discussion, if we can move number 20, discussion and consideration, Marvin Eford Park facility rental fee schedule for both barn and picnic shelter up to number one, so that Derek can go and get on with his day.
Get to work.
Get to work. And then, if we can table discussion of communication plan number 10, and also table number 13, discussion of outside funding plan. We're not quite ready for those yet. We'll table those to the next work session in July, if that works.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then, if I can add one, which I guess would now be number 21, I guess, would be just to update the coffee with council schedule, since we need to add Andy in there and get him on the calendar, if we can do that.
Is that in open topics?
No, I'm just going to add that under items and discussion, if that's okay.
Well, that would be essentially 21, whatever the number turns out to be.
Yeah, 21, I think.
So, that's, what was the topic again?
Just coffee with council schedule update.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, that's it for me. Does anybody else have anything for the agenda? No? Andy, anything for you?
It sounds good.
Bob, Mr. Mayor, you guys good?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, so if I can get a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All, further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Do not think we have any presentations. So, it looks like on to Village Hall. Christina?
Yes. So, Councilmember Lyon and I met last week with the elders of the church and had a really good discussion about the property here and kind of what that would envision laid out and kind of addressed some of their concerns and kind of listened to some of their feedback and what their desires were. I have also heard back from Weddington, the church next door, and they have no interest in leasing or selling at this time.
Okay.
So, that is an update on that property, but don't know if you have some more information to provide to that. I do know that the church wanted us to provide some conceptual plans to them, and obviously, you know, if we hire a landscape architect, that's going to cost a couple thousand dollars. So, what Rohit has done is just kind of penciled in kind of some access points, just really like a hand-drawn kind of depiction of what we envisioned it to be. He's going to, he's printing that right now, so you all can look at it to make sure we're all on the same page, and if so, that's what we will give to the church and to see, you know, so they can have their conceptual layout. They did advise us that they didn't foresee any head nods or head shakes in the next couple of months, just based on everything that's going on and kind of the process that they would like to see laid out.
Okay. Would it make some sense, because obviously, I think we're all interested in moving this process forward either direction we go, would it make sense to go ahead and put out the corner property for rebid, just to see where it comes back after the work we've done? What do you guys, what do you guys think about that? I mean, as we're getting information from the church and continuing down that road, it doesn't cost us anything to put it out for rebid, does it?
Rohit, the one that you printed.
As far as building?
Yeah. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything to put it out for rebid, does it?
Uh-uh.
So, at least that way, we'll have a, hopefully, a more solid, maybe more realistic number for that corner property, and then, as we get additional information from the church, we can continue down that path, kind of doing it parallel.
The only, the only thing that I envisioned that it may cost is we would need to get our architect involved to answer any questions that may result from the bid, which is not going to be much.
That would be small, right?
Yeah. I guess it would, from my point, I would say is we'd have to look at how much it's going to cost for rebuild before I say either year or any.
And it shouldn't cost, it shouldn't really cost anything. If I had to guess a number from the architect, because we're not doing anything, we wouldn't be doing anything to redo the plans, the plan's already done. If I had to make a guess, it'd be under 5,000, probably not even that. I'd say maybe 1,500 at best to answer questions with the architect, but that's just my knee-jerk reaction guess.
I think it's a great idea, because again, the whole purpose of this is just keep the ball moving forward.
Right.
You know, sitting, just sitting on it and not making progress, because...
Yes.
You know, we have, the options are out there, let's just go ahead and start moving where we can.
Where we can, right.
Move each one of them forward, so it's a culmination of decision, matter of two decisions.
I mean, that's, that's kind of what my thought process was.
Well, if, okay, so if we put it, if we do the rebid, I mean, I suppose actual costs would change, but it would be similar costs if we put it in a different place, if we built the same building?
Yeah, that, yeah, that would definitely, yeah, and we wouldn't be able to put this, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, we would not be able to put Village Hall on this property out for rebid until we get site plans and all that stuff, which will cost money.
Right.
But the corner property, right now, especially with the changes that we've made for the retention ponds and things like that.
We have not made any of those changes officially.
We haven't.
No. We've only discussed those conceptually. We would have to get the civil engineer to redo the plans for that.
Okay.
So, if we were to rebid now, we would be, basically be bidding the same thing that we've already bid, the exact same thing.
But don't you think the price would maybe be down since?
So, this is this lot here, right?
This is right, like, over here?
This picture that you have in your hand is, is the, just the general depiction here?
Yeah.
So, the church can see kind of conceptually what we're looking at.
Well, I mean, as far as the site goes, I would think that this would be a cheaper site to build on than the corner lot, just because of topographical considerations.
Yeah, I don't know. If we're, if we're basically moving the same footprint that we would have there here, we'd still have the same impervious surface, still have the same issues that we're dealing with down there, we just wouldn't need as much filler, so whatever.
Yeah, as much grading.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know the cost of that. The engineer...
Site work's expensive.
Well, we had estimated the 500, and I don't know that I brushed it off in my head, but it was 560-ish, don't quote me on that, but that's the site work that they estimated here, where down there, it was maybe seven or 800.
I was going to say 500, but okay.
Yeah, it's expensive to do site work, so it would be cheaper here, so that's, that's...
But the only, the only caveat to that is we'd have to redo the plans, too, so that's going to be another increase here, because we can't, we can't take the plans that we've got approved down there and do them here.
We'd have to redo the whole plan.
And the plan's already approved down there. So...
Bob?
In addition to, in addition, we had a code change that happened in 2017, 2018, where the, the plans would have to be redone in their entirety for here anyways.
If we moved it here?
So, it was done previous to the code change, did that?
It was, yeah.
Okay.
So, as I look at this picture, am I seeing, if, if we were to, this would be something that we would go with, is that not saying that this would not be here?
Yeah, the house is here now.
It's, it's vague.
That's the house, that's where we are now.
Where we're sitting.
But the church seems to want to demolish it.
That's where we are right now.
Okay, I got you, I got you. I was thinking this was the church.
You were thinking the church. Yeah, no, that's where we are right now.
It's shifted one over.
I'm, I'm a little confused what I'm, I'm a little confused what I'm looking at. I'm just, I'm drawing that I'm not sure who drew, but...
I got you.
Yeah. I, I drew this, so I can explain what I'm, we're looking at here. So, over to the left is the current Village Hall site, where we are now, and this is a drawing of if we were to build the Village Hall, the new Village Hall, all the way to the edge of the Church Grove property. It would go all the way to the right, with some parking lots to the left of that, and then maybe some public space in between. And it's still, I guess it's still in question whether we would keep this building or demolish it, but that's what we're talking about right now.
And this is just conceptual, this is really just so the church can kind of envision what it's going to look like. This is not exactly how it's going to be. We'd have to hire a landscape architect to, to get access.
Correct. And Christina, I had a hard time hearing where, where that meeting went when you met with, I assume, Jamie, and they are open to this?
Well, what, they're, they're just wanting, they're really starting this, I don't want to say from the beginning, but they're starting from the last conversation we had, was to basically say they'd be, they'd be open to us doing a Village Hall on their property, but the preference would be at the other end of the land part of it, and they just, they need to kind of take step by step what that would look like, what it would mean. Then, we could get into the contract piece of, you know, what's a long-term lease, what, you know, how involved would they be, if any, in their say on how Village Hall would look in that part. So, this is kind of the next step out of that, out of that meeting was to say, can you give us kind of a conceptual of how it would look and what would be, what would we would be looking at? So, we could present this to them, you know, any day now and say, this is kind of the starting point, again, I shouldn't say starting point, this is kind of the next step of what you requested information. Here we go, we're providing it to you, tell us what your thoughts are. And they can come back and say, no, I don't like it. They can come back and say, you know what, that's, that looks fairly appealing to us, like the way that that was set up, although we know that it's not the exact, you know, architectural sign-off view of this. So, they're wanting us to provide them with enough information that they can make a sound...
Next decision for them.
Right. Correct.
Does that make sense, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it does. And no offense, Rohit, I just hope we're not presenting this picture at all.
Oh, no, no, of course not. I whipped this up really fast for this meeting, but if we present this to the church, it would be a lot, a lot prettier version.
If it's, if, if I have any input on this, and if we could, I'd like to see the Village Hall building shifted back, like, kind of like where that S is, kind of like right to there, Rohit, like that built, like, right there, just shifted back to that portion, not so much as far forward. Or somewhere in there. That's it. Besides that, I think it looks good. What about, did, did you guys talk about picnic area, soccer field, any of that stuff, or did you just throw that in there for fun?
I just threw that in there.
Okay, that's fine. I just checked in.
Is this, Rohit, is, is there any kind of a illusion to scale on this?
There is, it is the scale.
Okay. And then, so what, Kim, you're saying you want to, you're looking at is maybe being the same offset from the road as where we are now, or maybe just a little deeper?
A little deeper. Yeah, just a smidge deeper.
Okay. So, one of the things, before I forget, one of the things that they had kind of brought up, and you brought up picnic area, here's my, they were concerned because someone that they walked, they walked that property with from the planning board said, oh, I envision picnic tables. Now, here's my take on it. Village Hall should be open from 9:00 to 5:00, and after 5:00 o'clock, we really shouldn't have anything unless there's a meeting there. Their concern was having people kind of on this property all the time on a regular basis. So, my recommendation would be, not only from what their concern is, you know, grass soccer fields, picnic areas, and that kind of stuff that would bring the general public into the property after hours of picnic.
All right, so I would take those off, then.
That's fine.
Because it should be Village Hall and from 9:00 to 5:00, and for meetings, Village Hall.
And I'm assuming, Rohit, that these are like walking trails, like, to get back to the side pathways, whatever, now some trails, if it, cool.
I think those have to stay.
Yeah, no, those are fine.
And the additional parking is something I heard you say that they wanted.
I think that's finally, I think that's finally the additional parking there, but I would take out the other stuff.
Sure.
And then, we're, along with kind of whatever we send them from this picture, we're going to send them the, what the building's going to look like, like, what we have approved already, and then see what they think about that. Is that accurate? Yes?
Yeah.
The plans, yes.
You were...
So, we would do just a redo of this.
Yeah.
And...
Then get it back over.
Yeah, and send, I would send them the picture of what we've kind of, what we have gotten approved in terms of building plans, of what the building would look like, I would send that to them along with this, because the more information that they have, I feel like would be, would be better.
Is there, is there any thought put into, in this meeting when you met with them, Jamie, about them presenting to us what they think it should look like, rather than us, or is it should be more from us presenting to them, do you think?
It's more, the obligation will be more on us to present to them.
I think that's right. I mean, it's our, it's our Village Hall, like, it should be what we want it to look like, and then if they've got some tweaks to it, I'm totally open to that, but I think it's, you know, up to us to do that.
Christina, I was just going to bring up, you were talking about the retention pond at the other Village, potential Village Hall site. You were saying that site plan is to be redone, and you were then saying...
The site plan has to be redone.
Would the same, let's say, architecture for the site plan, if we went back and said, can you look at that piece of property, for, you know, what changes would be made, and come over after Councilman Lyon gets all the information from the church and the paint pond, what we're going to do there, can they then go over to the other, this site? Like in other words, if there were three different firms, can they revise one and as they're working towards the other? In other words, so we, we can actually, you know, have real numbers, real ideas before we make a choice?
So, I think what you're asking is if the site plans can kind of be done simultaneously at both sites, so that we can compare apples to apples? Yes, that's definitely, that's definitely a possibility, however, it does cost a lot of money for civil site plans, so that's, that's probably not something I would recommend to do initially. I want to say the site plans for, at the end of the street, were about $50,000 roughly, so...
I would, I would rather get further along with the church to make sure they're really on board before we start spending that kind of money.
Absolutely.
Before we go to that part.
Either way we look at it, we've looked at the site plans in the past pretty carefully, and we have worked with the engineer where we think we can reduce the amount of impervious surface that would potentially reduce the requirements of those ponds, however, it was never a definite, because we'd have to redo the site plans, and, and again, that would be, I have to look back at my numbers, but I want to, I want to try to gauge it was about $30,000 to redo those at the end of the street, roughly. If my memory serves me correctly, I'd have to go back and look at the numbers, but I think it was about 30-ish to redo those plans to reduce the impervious surface.
35.
35,000?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So, we can definitely do it either way, but it is going to cost us money to actually redo the plans, but the, the engineer did seem to think that it was a possibility.
So, do we want to go ahead and just put it out for rebid and just see what numbers we get back for the corner?
I don't, I don't see why not.
I don't either. I think it's at least the next step to kind of, like you said, keep the ball going.
I think, I was speaking with, I think, Councilman Vanderburg had said that, you know, one of the, the solo, single person that has shown up for coffee to council, which is amazing to me, because I see so much propaganda going around, and how this place is just in uproar, and so, everyone's so concerned, but at coffee with council, we get the same one individual showing up, sorry for my tangent, but saying, why, why are we moving so fast with this? And I believe that you said, we've been doing this since 2004.
We're not moving fast at all.
No.
I think, I would, I think many of our constituents would argue that we're moving backwards.
Yep.
And that's not, that's certainly could be taken as a fair assessment, because this isn't, let's, let's move, let's continuously move forward.
All right.
Let's look at this, if we're serious about it, let's do it. If we're going to just take baby steps on it, then let's, let's just nix it and let someone else that has the fortitude to do it, do it. But I think, I believe this council has the fortitude to, to move this forward and to make it happen, so...
All right. Well, then, I'm, I mean, I think that's, I think that's the next step along, in tangent with what we're doing with the church. I think it's to put it out to rebid. So, we need to authorize you to amend the agreement with the engineer and the architect to assist in the rebid?
Yes, I need to revise that.
So, do you need a motion for that?
That would be preferable. ESP, ESP is the engineer, and then the architect is?
Urban.
Urban.
Urban?
Urban Development Group or something?
Yeah, Urban Development.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize the administrator to amend the agreement with ESP, our engineer, and Urban, our architect, to assist in the rebid process for the corner lot at Newtown and Martin School Road.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, so we'll move forward with that, and then you guys will get, Rohit, you'll send the church this kind of revised, what I've made about...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send it to Jamie, and he can coordinate that.
Okay, perfect. And then you'll send, we'll also send along the pictures of the exterior of the building. Okay. Cool.
And y'all, we had done alternates in the bid down the street, and so I think we'll send them the same alternates, the stone facade and then the ship-lap looking...
Yep. I think that's good. Okay. Very good. Anybody else for Village Hall? Nope? Okay, so we're off to D, items of discussion. Number one, discussion and consideration of Marvin Eford Park facility rental fee schedule for both barn and picnic shelter. Derek, you're up.
Thanks to Austin, our intern, for putting this together. As you know, we have the picnic shelter at the park now, which is an additional source of revenue for us. Do you have a sheet that shows the picnic shelter fees on there?
Yeah, we've got, yeah, it's in our agenda packet.
Okay.
We've got to get to it, since we're going out of order, sorry.
No.
Okay, so, yeah, so we've got the revised one in our packet.
Christina had mentioned that, I think you guys were going to discuss these fees anyways, so I'm just putting for the proposal for the picnic shelter fees, they're basically just a scaled-down version of the barn rent fees, because obviously, it's a smaller facility.
So, Derek, this little chart that y'all have in the back of the policy, is that just for the picnic shelter?
I apologize for that. One is that...
No, I think it's for both. I think it's for the barn and the picnic shelter, like, the overflow trash fee, the trash debris fee, the broom cleaning fee, the mop cleaning fee. Those are for both.
Correct, that's for anything.
Okay. So, all right.
The only, only addition is the picnic shelter rental fees. Pretty much everything else stays the same, unless it was just deleted, which were...
The wedding fee.
The wedding fee.
Are we no longer doing weddings?
No, but we're not charging based on the type of event they're having.
Okay, gotcha.
That never really made any sense to me, why there was a wedding fee. If they wanted the barn for Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday, then they just rent it, just like anybody else would rent it for their birthday party, or, you know, barnets, or whatever it is. So, I don't, we weren't paying for, or we were charging them more for unnecessary...
So, did we not talk about upping these prices for rentals?
I had heard that you guys did, yes.
Okay.
Not opposed to that.
Okay. So, okay, so the only thing that we have revised is just the addition of the picnic shelters. We did not get a revise of what you think we should raise the fees to.
That, staff has not done that, y'all are more than welcome to do that. We have to amend our code of fees officially to make this official, which will have to be done at the next meeting. So, that's what this handout is, is the existing fees that we have now.
Okay.
And so, with the changes that y'all make here, what we will do in turn is go back and amend this manual of fees and charges and present that, maybe in the consent agenda at the next meeting for approval.
Okay.
So, whatever it is that y'all desire to have these fees, just let us know, and we will make it happen.
I mean, I'm fine with these fees for the picnic shelter. Do we want to talk about raising the barn fees? I mean, that's kind of what I had heard that we had talked about.
Am I allowed to make the, make the...
Sure.
Okay. I see a lot of non-residents renting the barn via a resident.
Okay.
So, they call their friend and say, can you rent the barn for me? And they get the barn at the resident rate, and, and their, their resident friend is merely a guest or helping them host the event, but...
Are they there, are they there at, like, check-in time?
They're there. Yeah, they're there. I mean, they're the one, they'll bring the check up, or, but I don't know.
I'm not sure how to get around that.
Yeah, there's really not, there's, without being prejudice against people, I mean, there's really no way to...
So, are you thinking, so with your, you saying that, what's your, do you have a suggestion?
I wouldn't call it a suggestion, I would just throw it out as an option to just make them equal across the board. That's one way to raise them, you know, per se.
Yeah.
Put that down in the...
Then I always feel like the park is like...
It utilizes the residents.
Yeah. Like, that's, that, that is a, that is a service that we give to the residents.
We're already paying for it in our taxes, so to charge the same rate as a non-resident wouldn't be accepted well, I don't think.
But I, but I am fine raising the rate some, because they've seemed very...
I mean, do you feel like we're going to have a reduction in rentals because of a rate hike? Do you feel like that there is a...
I don't think we'll ever have a reduction in rentals. I think that place is, when it's available and open, is very well-desired, and our fees are typically less than anybody else's.
Okay.
So, what are we, percentage-wise, under the average?
I'd have to do research on that, I just, I just know, like, from calling to look at the picnic shelter for Waxall, it seemed like it was a little bit more, I'll say 65 or 75 an hour at Town Creek Park. But that's another example, you know, if I go to Waxall...
Wait, per hour? And ours is $75 for four hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Per resident. Oh, non-peak hours, Monday through Thursday.
Right.
Now, that's just me off, off the memory, I didn't pull together the chart for this. If I go to Waxall, though, I'm going to pay the same as a Waxall taxpayer.
So, they don't have a different...
I don't think so. I would gladly do, do more research on this.
Well, one thing I wanted to bring up is, I just asked our tax collector, when the last time the rates have gone up, she said this is the original rates that we have, have always had. So, whenever the barn was constructed, from my, I haven't done the research on this myself... that we have, have always had. So, whenever the barn was constructed, from my, I haven't done the research on this myself, but.
I had one a couple of years ago.
On the barn?
Cause PRG discussed this a couple of years ago. I thought we had, we had amended a fee schedule.
This revised fee schedule says ten, ten, twenty eighteen.
Well, that.
But that could be for anything.
Yeah.
There was a lot of talk, but there was never any action taken.
The sheet that I handed out where it says fee revised schedule and it says twenty eighteen, this is fees for everything. I know we recently revised some stuff in planning, so this is the third page of all of our fees, so that could encompass some of the planning fees, not.
We might have gone up on like the security deposit or some of the fines for, you know, stuff broken or trash.
I know we discussed it at length a couple of years ago, but I, you know, I can't say for sure what we, if we change anything officially.
So there's two things we can do at this time. We, y'all could pick a uniform, you know, let's go up a hundred bucks, go up seventy-five bucks, whatever it is you wanna do across the board, or we can individually go through and kind of highlight where the, where y'all wanna see changes take place, or we can get more research done amongst neighboring municipalities and what their barn rental fees are.
Derek, Derek, have you seen, and I don't see anything other than the fee structure, have you seen an increase in requests to use or has it stayed the same, you think, or?
Over the years.
Well, this was last year, say, have you seen an uptick in people wanting to use it or?
Yeah, we, we did that for what, PRG, a few months ago and it's, it has been a steady increase over the years.
In fact, right now, there's probably about four people that are interested in the barn. One is in September for a real small wedding. There is another one and we have two rentals now that are booked out. One is in August, which will probably still hold, but one in July we have to ask to be moved. But we had six rentals in the month of June and we probably had to cancel them.
And just out of, just out of curiosity, how far in advance do we allow people to book?
We don't have a limit.
To cancel?
No.
Oh, to cancel or to book?
Oh, I don't, I thought it's a cancel.
To book something, if I wanted to book something for two thousand twenty-two, I could do that right now.
Yes.
I mean, we may wanna reconsider that.
Sure.
Just to make it within a year or whatever, I think is fair, but I, I don't know about going two, three years, but that, that's a side issue. But I just was curious about the, the volume of increased need to have something like that and, and maybe the picnic shelter is, is something that there'll be more of a demand for versus just the barn.
I think there will be.
So, if y'all recall some of the conversations that we had in the, in the retreat or shortly thereafter in terms of justifying the need for additional staff in, in the parks, we presented kind of a, a chart that showed you how the trends were going up and how many rentals we were seeing as, as compared to, you know, when it initially started. And that trend kind of climbed dramatically. And so we can bring that back to the next meeting if y'all wish to see that again.
I, I would, I mean, I'm fine picking a number and saying across the board. I, I don't know that you guys need to go and see what Waxall does or what Weddington does, take more staff time to do it. I think we can just pick a number and say, this is, this is what it's gonna be now. I think if we go.
My, my only comment would be, like, looking at, as far as down the agenda and we're talking about the discussion of the voluntary annexation plan, I think if we kept the residents the same and raised it on the non-residents, I think that helps us. Now, that is something to put in consideration.
I know, but then you, but then you run into what you just said. You've got non-residents calling their Marvin friend and saying, hey, rent this for me. I, I think you could go up like, you know, twenty-five bucks for the Marvin residents and fifty bucks for the non-Marvin residents across the board and that'd be, that'd be good. I don't think anybody would sneeze at that.
I mean, well, just to clarify, why are we raising this? Is there a, a, a cost increase in, in maintenance or are we just looking?
Staff, we just hired somebody new, so yes, there's a cost increase.
But there's a need for that staff to, to actually work these rentals?
Yep.
Okay, gotcha.
And you have people that are, that are renting, whether it's the shelter or the barn. There are people that venture out and they're running, running the trails and walking the trails and we gotta make sure that all this. And I'm fine again with, I'm fine again with picking a number and doing it on both the resident and non-resident. What, um, um, not in support of is doing just a single charge. I would still want it to be a resident and non-resident.
High grade.
Because I would want our residents to feel like.
It's a service.
It's a service.
Yeah.
And it, we're gonna make them jump to a hoop to go, and we also have, listen, if somebody from Pick estate wanted to come in, if they wanna get someone, and once they're done, they leave, at least we can go back to the person here in order. So.
Yeah.
May I show you that out? May I suggest, um, now, this is something, I don't know how, I, I know we could do this and they do it for like, I were to send, we could do this at, at, over at Fire Phone. Jamie, you know this. If I send a guest over to play golf, if I'm accompanying them, they get the rate, it's a much, it's my rate, right? But if I send a guest to the golf course and I'm not accompanying, I'm, I'm not there, then the rate is higher. And, and when you go to check in, who's ever managing the property? The person who's doing the favor, let's call it, for their non-resident member, they have to be, at least show up. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's not much to ask. It's a, that, again, if I'm, if they're gonna get the rate, I had to, I would have to play golf with them for that four hours. Now, we're not saying they have to stay there, but making an extra effort that somebody from the, from Marvin needs to be, if they're gonna host this event or do this event, at least a check-in type thing where they're there. And again, we can't control if they leave, but who's ever managing it, Derek or whoever, when they go to set it up, but yeah, is the person here, is the, is the Marvin resident there?
I think they have to be. I think whoever rented it has to be there and sign in.
Well.
I mean, you have an.
Okay, well then, that'll let them know if it's a resident or not, right?
Yeah, yeah, but they're just having somebody and then they show up and then they can leave.
But, but it, it does, it's an extra, it's an extra level. Like if I get a friend to go rent that place and I don't have to show up.
Yeah, but they have to. Whoever rents it has to show up. So.
The liability's on them too.
Yeah, the liability's on the whoever's renting it, so.
So they're already on the hook, Joe. It's, there's no option for them to just send somebody there.
What's the parking pass fee?
Okay.
Cause as we're looking at the rentals, we should probably assess the parking.
Parking permits is on page two.
I don't have page two.
Is this, is this where?
Here.
Is this where, like a photographer can?
That's the hundred dollar fee. Yeah, that's the pass.
Yeah.
So that's something y'all might wanna consider too, cause people.
I would, I would, I would ask two things separate, our little discussion here. I think the security deposit needs to go up. I don't think three hundred dollars would cover potential damage, but I don't wanna make it so high that it deters people from being able to afford it, whether that's like three fifty or four hundred. So, I would ask that you consider raising the security deposit. Personally, I don't think three hundred dollars covers what, you know, could potentially happen there. But I don't wanna make it so high that it deters people from being able to afford, you know, put that down. That's fully refundable, obviously. So.
How soon do they get that back?
Twenty days.
Twenty days, Derek.
Oh, come on, I read it. You were, I was like twenty days. I read that somewhere, something, somewhere.
So, maybe three fifty.
Why don't we have a cleaning fee on this?
Cause they're supposed to clean it.
They're required to clean it.
And then we charge them and take money out of their security deposit if we have to clean it.
Okay. It doesn't, it didn't say that on this.
You typically have to clean that down.
Yeah, we have. We have definitely taken money out. That's where I saw it.
Yeah, there was a couple of them.
That's where I saw it.
It's a good option that people that don't wanna necessarily pay for it can clean it.
Yeah, but then we gotta, then we gotta hire somebody, we gotta have somebody come in and we gotta take care of it, so that's just more on us. I'd rather, I'd rather take it off of theirs, make them responsible for it.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm saying. It gives the, the person that rents it the option to clean it instead of having to pay for somebody else to do it.
Correct.
Yes. I like that. It makes you more responsible for it too.
I mean, the last event we had, a lady was passing out little candies for, for kids that were coming and, and I said, listen, I just wanna tell you, I've seen this happen before. Make sure you have somebody go around and pick up after those kids. I don't wanna ding you on your security deposit for us having to, you know, pick up that trash. So, they, you know, we, we make them aware to.
Well, it's in the contract.
Pick them up after themselves.
I mean, it's in the contract that they have to sign, so they should be well aware before you sign something. Okay, so, okay, so what's on the agenda is just the rental fee scheduled for both barn and picnic shelter. So in terms of like the parking permits and professional stuff, we'll have to talk about that later since it's not on there, but I think we can talk about the security deposit and then the, the rental fees. I think Derek, if you think the rent, the security deposit needs to go up, I think four hundred dollars is, I think that's easy because it's refundable. If you clean up, you get it back. I think that's fine. How does everybody feel about four hundred?
I'm good with it. I'm fine. I think five hundred sounds, you know, scary.
Yeah. Four, I think four hundred's good though. Joe?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with four hundred. I would, I would still probably take a little, which, you know, whatever percentage is taken away because do they actually haul their garbage off too?
Yeah, they're supposed to. If you look in your, if you look in your agenda, Joe, on the, on the last page of this thing, there's different violations of the penalties, the cost of it.
I see it, I see it.
So, there's stuff in there that, you know.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with four hundred.
Okay. So, um.
For picnic shelter too?
For picnic shelter too. For both the barn and the picnic shelter. I think that's fine. Um, so.
So you wanna charge a four hundred dollar deposit to use the picnic shelter?
Yeah.
I think that's a little steep with picnic shelter. The structure is not nearly as vulnerable to.
Yeah, but if they clean up, they get it back. Twenty days? It's just kinda showing that, you know, my thing with security deposits is if you don't, if you're scared away from like a security deposit, then you're not gonna take care of it. That's how I look at a security deposit. If you guys disagree, I mean, that's totally fine. I just, you know.
Having, it has two different numbers. Would it make it any different for us to manage?
I think if you do it two different, if you do two different numbers, I think you're gonna have more rentals, like birthday parties over in the picnic shelter, the smaller groups.
Okay, so do that maybe three fifty or do that with three hundred and then do.
Why don't we just do the picnic shelter, keep it at three hundred and do the barn at four hundred?
Okay.
Yeah, there's more liability in the barn for damage than there is the picnic shelter.
Why? That's what I'm saying, like so.
It discourages people from using a picnic shelter if they have to pay a high deposit.
Right. Yeah, but they get it back. I don't know. I just, my, my thing is if you're gonna, if you're gonna take care of it, then it shouldn't matter if it's a, a thousand dollars.
Now, do we, do we cash that check and then hold it just to make sure?
Yes, yes.
To do it. Okay.
And we tell them, cash your check upfront.
Yeah. Okay, so let's change the barn security deposit to four hundred. So, I need a motion to change the barn security deposit from three hundred to four hundred. Refundable?
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes. We'll make that four hundred. Okay, what do you guys wanna do about the prices?
The what?
The price, the rental fees for the barn and the picnic shelter. I really think, I really think the picnic shelter is probably good in terms of pricing and just raise the non-resident barn?
We need something as soon as possible adopted so we can start renting the picnic shelter.
That won't take place until the next meeting officially.
Right, and well, and we can't even start rentals for another three weeks now.
Yeah. But I'm fine with the picnic shelter prices because it's, like Andy said, it's smaller.
But if you wanna, if, if you're not decided on fees, we could, we could bring it back in the fall and winter and make it for twenty-nine, or what's the next year?
Twenty twenty-one. Don't go backwards. Let's get out of twenty twenty.
I, my belief, I, I would go up fifty dollars on both resident and non-resident with the addition of the additional resource that we have there.
For just the barn?
For just the barn.
Just the barn. Okay, I'm good with that.
And you're covering, you know, you wanna be able to cover the cost of that additional resource out there. Cause they're gonna have, here regardless, if they, if they, if they showed up with two people and they just sat right there, that, somebody still has to walk that trail.
Yep, yep. Okay, I'm good with that. You guys good with fifty bucks across the board for barn, resident and non-resident? Bob, Joe?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm good with that.
Okay, the only one thing that I have a question is the extra hour fee. Do you wanna double that? Or, or are we, are we talking the same percentage of? You had across the board fifty bucks each, that, that's a different, a whole different thing. The extra hour fee, is that, should we just do the same percentage increase?
Personally, the extra hour fee is silly. It, it just needs to be one-fourth of whatever the four-hour fee is.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so can you, so can you work up that pricing and just do a fourth of?
Correct. Because I, I don't wanna tell somebody they can't rent it for five hours, but they can rent it for six hours if they want to. Money, you know, revenue's revenue.
Right.
But I don't wanna nickel and dimple just because they want to do five instead of four, we're, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's, we're gonna deter them from renting it for that fifth hour, so.
Yeah, cause it's actually a little higher than, than the twenty-five percent of the time, so.
So, if everybody's okay with that, what we'll do at a staff level is revise our fee schedule to reflect those changes. And if y'all are interested in reviewing the parking permits and the professional access fee, we can bring that forth in the next work session if that's the desire for it.
I would say, let's put parking permits and professional access fee on Park Truck and Greenway. Let them look at it and come back with a recommendation for us and then we can go from there. Is that good?
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah.
Can we just note that like extra hours are available?
Yes.
Can we just, can we just make the calls?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. So why don't you guys make all these changes that we?
Can I ask y'all to do away with the trellis plot at Under Community Gardens? Is that on there?
Yeah, we can't do that. It's on the agenda. Sorry.
It's on the fees.
I know, but we're talking about barn and picnic shelter fees. Sorry.
You can bring it to your PRG board.
Yeah.
Yeah, let PRG do all that.
Yeah. And then, um, okay, so do, do you guys need a motion to make these changes and put it on the consent agenda? Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to increase for just the barn, the resident and non-resident, fifty dollars per line item except for the extra one-hour fee and make that the twenty-five percent of the hour.
Of the four-hour fee.
Of the four-hour fee. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Very good. Okay, Derek, thank you very much.
Thank you, Derek.
Okay, number two, discussion and consideration of minor subdivision application number twenty dash one, two, four, two, seven, one, zero, one, eight, dash B, Woodland Forest Drive. We're open. You're up.
Thank you. So, in time of view, you have a minor subdivision application. This one is really straightforward. They've got a lot in the front of Woodland Forest and it is six point five something acres. And what, all they wanna do is split it down the middle-ish to, to create two lots, three and three and a half acres. There are no complications. Each site is fully compliant with all of the. There are no complications. Each site is fully compliant with all of the, the lot size and orientation regulations. They'll have well and septic, and there's one house existing, and they're proposing to sell the other lot, and, you know, they'll be in your house there.
Okay, so it's going to get split down the middle off of Woodland Forest, not off of Newtown?
Right.
Okay. And so will there be a driveway on Newtown? I can't remember what it said.
I don't, actually, I don't know about that. So I, it's not, it's not going to be in the middle, but the, the person who is submitting this application is on the WebEx call, so maybe they can answer that question?
Hi, this is Tiffany Johansson. I'm the Realtor for this, and I'm...
Yeah, wait, 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 wait. Hold on, we need to, the council needs to allow you to speak at the table, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you guys good with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. We have to give some...
Okay, Bob?
I'm good with that. I was in the planning board when...
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, are you okay to have Tiffany answer some questions?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Tiffany, sorry about that. Thank you so much for answering some questions. Is there going to be a driveway on to Newtown Road from the new lot?
I am not 100% certain whether the new owners will or will not. I am representing the seller of the property. I believe they probably would have their driveway on Woodland Forest, but I cannot say for certain that.
So, why, I'm curious of why we have the representation of the seller when this is the buyer?
No, well, the seller is the person who owns the 6.5 acres currently, and they're intending to sell, they're intending to split that and then sell the, um...
So we have representation of the landowner?
The, the property owner is the seller, is what you mean. The current property owner of the 6.5 acres.
There's no buyer yet, Joe. There's, they're proposing to split...
I think there is a, I think there is a buyer, but they're, they're looking to subdivide first and then sell it.
Right, we don't have the buyer stage yet.
Right.
Either way, that's like...
Okay, so they want to get this changed before they sell?
Right. And then sell that three, I think the bottom one, 3.5, to sell that to someone.
I'd say that's the top one.
So this rectangle is the intended house site?
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you, can you still run on the map? I was really struggling with, I didn't see it on the map.
That's the current fourth ten area.
Oh, I thought that's where that was to go.
And if I may speak again, that is likely going to be where the house is going to be, is somewhere around that riding rink, which says Wood Rail Fence, and it's a rectangle coming to the my lot on Woodland. And then the repair, we've had the county come out and identify where the septic and where the perk and the repair area to the back of it, but my understanding is they're going to put the house somewhere right there around where the riding rink is. And so I can't imagine that they're going to want to come in off of Newtown, and off Newtown it's much easier to be going to Woodland Forest, based on what we're going to say.
Okay.
Okay, well, and plus the terrain is not conducive to getting onto Newtown there anyway, it's a big dip.
Yeah, it's on that curve there, too, yeah.
And all that, so it's probably better.
Well, and with the setbacks there, too, that's probably where the house has got to go.
I, I mean, that's my only concern, is the driveway getting onto Woodland Forest instead of Newtown, but...
Is that something that we can regulate? Is that something that we can...
I'm not entirely sure if that's something we can regulate, because both Newtown and Woodland Forest are public roads. They're, they're entitled to put it wherever...
They want?
Yeah.
Well, DOT has to approve it, right?
Right.
Oh, if it's a...
Wherever, yeah, wherever DOT...
Yeah, it has to be a sleuth, let's see, have it approved that?
I think the only thing we could do is allow them, is, is, since we own Woodland Forest, we could, we could make them not put it on Woodland Forest, because it's our road, but we can't, we can't tell them anything about Newtown Road, because it's not our road. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I have the map up. If you...
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I see.
Are you oriented now? It's all the way at the end of Newtown Road, state line.
Yeah.
Here we are at Woodland Forest, and that's what the track looks like now. That's the horse pen. And that's where they're saying they'll put the site, the new house.
And that's the existing house right behind it?
Right.
I, I can't for the life of me ever imagine someone wanting to put a road on there.
No, I do, yeah.
With that being said, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with, with everything presented here.
Yeah, me too. Okay. All right, so, Bob, Mr. Mayor, you guys have any questions for anybody?
I do not.
Mr. Mayor?
No, not at this time. I'm, as I'm looking at this, even though Jamie, I appreciate, I can't imagine, but that's, you know...
Yeah, but if we, if we can't, you know, put that as a restriction, then I'm fine with it.
Right.
All right. I'm perfectly fine with it.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to, uh, put the, because we, because we need to put this on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I know it says consideration, but you, you could put it on the consent agenda.
Yeah, we need to put it on the consent agenda. So I need to make a motion to place on the consent agenda for July 14th meeting approval, the minor subdivision application number 20-12427-1018-B, Woodland Forest.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Tiffany, thank you very much for that information.
Thank you, guys.
Next up is discussion of the Preserve at Marvin, full bond release and road acceptance. Rohit, you're up again.
One second.
While he's coming up, I want to mention that we do need to have a resolution for those roads. The petition is in here, but if this is approved as an item to move forward in the consent agenda, we would have the road acceptance in a resolution format.
In the consent agenda, by the way.
Say that again?
So in your petition for the acceptance of roads, we have to physically do this by, by resolution and not just the acceptance of a petition.
Okay.
So we would put this in a resolution format at the next meeting, so it's official.
And just put it in the consent agenda?
Yes, yeah. If that's, if there's no...
Well, if that's decided.
If that's what's decided today, yes.
Got it. Okay.
Okay, so the Preserve is the neighborhood right behind us, under the one homes, kind of two separate sections. They've, they've got a trail section in the middle, and they've completed all of their obligations for developing the neighborhood, the roads, the sewer, stormwater, the trails, and our engineer has certified both the roads and the trails are up to our standards. So they're, they're ready to apply for the full bond release. That, and road acceptance petition is also there in your packet. That's really all I have to say about it. I personally walked the trail. I think the gravel could have been smaller size, but it is up to our standards, and they're, they're ready to, they're ready to close out.
Okay, so no issues, roads are good. AMT came out and looked at them?
Yeah, so AMT is certified on, I think the date was March 25th, that everything, everything, the trail, the trail was good. And then they went out in June, early June, to certify that. Everything else is good, and they're, they're ready.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not.
I do not, as long as everything is up to standard, especially that trail back there.
Yeah, they, um, some of you know that they did do the trail once, and it was not up to standard, and so we made them redo it, and, and now it is, so...
If everything's up to standard and everything checks off, I've got no issues.
Okay. All right, then I need a motion to place on the consent agenda for July 14th, the full bond release and road acceptance for the Preserve at Marvin.
And road acceptance?
I said road acceptance.
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. And then do we need to make a motion to do a resolution?
Well, staff will do that. We'll put it on the consent.
Okay, so you don't need that from us. Okay. All right, next up is consider adoption of general fund budget amendment number OR-2020-06-01. Christina?
So I had passed out a revised ordinance from the time the agenda was published to, to present. We, um...
Yes.
This is the closeout of the year. This is the last opportunity we have for any budget amendments for the year. So we went through and kind of assessed where we are year-to-date, and kind of anticipated what our year-end closure should be. And so there's a few different areas where we felt like we may be over, and we just wanted to be safe. So we basically moved funding from contingency and administrator's discretion to cover some of the overages that are anticipated. Those two line items being the attorney fees. We did have an insurance deductible for roughly $3,500 for a lawsuit that we're currently involved in that we have to pay within this fiscal year. So that's part of the 11,000 that we're requesting in that. And the other 78, 7,900 is just for attorney bills that we anticipate for the month of June. We have had a lot of legal things going on, a lot of contracts being done over the last month or two. So that is what we anticipate for June, just to be safe. If that money is not used in this year, it will go back into fund balance. So if we don't need it, it will revert back into fund balance. Same thing with engineering fees. We did go up slightly at the last meeting. As I had mentioned, we have a lot more revenues coming in for developments that are coming up than we had anticipated in our initial...
Go out and look at it.
Revenues, yes. But we've had a lot, we, we thought we were going to cover enough in the last budget amendment in these engineering fees, but we've had a lot of stormwater issues related to Publix, you know, with the, the rain events that we've had. We've had some new developments coming into play. We've had the bond releases where engineers are having to go out and look at things. So we've had a lot going on development-wise that has taken our engineer a lot more time than we have anticipated. So this is hopefully closeout of the year, and we don't anticipate anything else next year. We're pushing things back on just July 1st, just to be safe.
Does this have any impact on what we discussed earlier about the bids and engineering and all that?
It does not. This is completely unwilling. This is engineering bills associated with just general village purposes. Anything that's development-wide, within the municipality, they go out and they look at. So any new construction that comes on, any ongoing construction, they go out and they assess. Anything that we have that are issues that come out, like we just recently had a Greenway drainage issue, they go out and they look at stuff like that. So just pretty much they're our contract engineer for on-demand services that we need. Instead of having an in-house engineer, that's kind of who we call on. There's no money being appropriated from fund balance, just so everyone knows. This is all money being shifted within the budget that was already approved, again, from the contingency and administrator's discretion.
Okay, any questions?
No question. Me.
Okay, so do you need us to adopt that today?
I do, yes.
So I'd like to make, I need a motion to adopt the general fund budget amendment number OR-2020-06-01 as presented in the amendment that Christina gave us when we got here.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next up is accept June 2020 budget reallocation.
Same thing, yep. This, so the budget officer is allowed to reallocate up to $5,000, and this is basically encompasses what you just saw. $5,000 went to engineering fees, so that was...
Okay, that you moved from the ordinance.
Yeah, so just letting y'all know.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion for that as well?
I shouldn't, but y'all can go ahead and do it, just to be safe.
Well, it's kind of a different ordinance number.
It's, it's not an ordinance. It shouldn't be, it's not an ordinance.
It says authorized in section four. Oh, that's just as where it's authorized. Okay. We're just reallocating it, sorry.
Yeah, this is just an FYI, but you could go ahead and accept it.
I'll, we'll accept it. I need a motion to accept the June 2020 budget reallocation as presented. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Update of build grant. Rohit?
So at the last staff meeting, council had asked some questions of the grant application for the stormwater study, as we were requested to provide some level of participation. And at, at the time, we were not sure based on what other folks were doing. So you all had advised staff to go back and do some more research onto who had committed and who had not committed, and, and why, if, if we knew, so...
Yeah, this is what Bjorn told me in an email. So in that memo there, you have all of the municipalities and counties that are on board and who are not, who are requested, and, and the reasons why, but one of them, Bjorn does not know why, so he couldn't tell me. But the other two, they're, they're there.
All right. I mean, do we want to do this? I mean, we can still get in on it, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, so now that the application is, you know, submitted, we basically have until we hear back from the federal government about if we won the grant, and then we have all that time to decide. So you don't have to make a decision today. This is just an update on the information requested.
I just, I still don't understand, if we get it, what are they going to do for us?
It, it is a design study for improvements on stormwater and transportation.
But then are they going to improve it?
Um, well, no.
There's no implementation money.
As they said, I think in the last update I gave you, they will put the projects that they find on the list of DOT projects.
So we'll get it done in 2050?
There's no designated implementation money. It's just, we'll have a shovel-ready project, basically.
Does, does this not kind of fall in line? If we reviewed the land use plan, this is something we should be supporting, though?
Actually, yes. The planning board specifically wanted to add stormwater and drainage issues to the transportation section of the land use plan.
Good job, Joe. You drafted land use plan.
I'm still awake over here.
Yeah, it is listed in several places that stormwater is an issue that we should improve on.
It is true. It is in there, multiple places, a lot. I mean, how much is it, how much do they want?
And there's up nicely listed, I would, I would say, given the those who have committed to it, you know, it's part of a... I see, I see DOT hasn't, is not part of that, because they don't have any money. I wish we could just say that, but I think we, you know, need to, need to support this based on what, when I reviewed the land use plan.
A $3,500 is the amount that they're...
Oh, 35?
Yeah.
All right.
And it's pretty small.
I'm, I'm with Joe on that. I, I agree, especially after reading the land use plan.
What is this money going to? Where are they...
They're going to do a storm, they're going to do a study on improved stormwater designs for transportation infrastructure, so...
So we're giving something for the money?
Right.
Study.
It's a study.
We're giving a study, but they'll come out with, they'll come out with better designs for transportation infrastructure to handle the, you know, the previous development and stuff.
So they, they share that information then with, like, say, AMT and stuff, or how does that work?
They probably share it with us, and then we can share it with AMT.
I don't know how that works.
All right.
Obviously, they're sharing with the NC DOT.
Let's ask Bjorn that.
It's part of their implementation.
Do we ask him that? I mean, I, I think Joe's right. I think we should do it. Most everybody is doing it. It will support the land use plan, as we requested, so, but ask Bjorn, like, once the study's done, how does it... Yeah. All right, so do we want to make a motion to put this on the consent agenda to get up with the build?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need a motion to put on the consent agenda for July 14th our support of the build grant application for stormwater study and the co-instituting funds.
Not to exceed...
$3,500 to reservations.
$3,500.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Bob. Aye. All right, thank you, everybody. Motion passes. Okay. Next up is discussion of speed limit reduction on Woodland Forest. Rohit? Sorry.
Okay, so the title is Woodland Forest because they submitted the first request, but since then, I've also received a request from the Preserve H O A. They basically all want speed limit signs. They basically all want speed limit signs, 25 miles an hour. And the issue, I guess, is that the default speed limit is 35 if you don't specifically change it in your ordinance.
Even in a neighborhood?
Even in a neighborhood. Any road in a city is 35 unless you change it. And so we have a section in our ordinance, chapter 74. If you look at it, it's just a list of several neighborhoods who have already reduced their speed limits to 25. Fire Dorns on there, Canterfield Creeps on there, Wayne and Chase, I think, is on there. I don't know if Wayne and Chase is on there. But anyway, there are several neighborhoods that are already on there. And so I'm, I put in this memo to consider maybe just in bulk passing or like putting forward an ordinance that will change the ordinance to include all neighborhoods that at least we own or maybe even all neighborhoods in Marvin to 25 miles an hour.
So in a nutshell, basically what Rohit's saying is that we have an ordinance that has traffic provisions. We would have to amend that ordinance for each individual street. Where we're going to do the 25 miles per hour, it would be easier for us at a staff level to just go ahead and dub all subdivisions instead of going through and individualizing each individual street. So the ones that have submitted are just the two on the surface. But we feel like once we get this out there, we're going to have more come in and say, this is where we're at. Now, I will mention that when we reduce these speed limits, we are going to have to pay for the cost of those new speed limit signs for wherever we do that. So we need to be prepared and cognizant of that cost as we're doing this.
Right. But I found it to be just roughly $85 per sign. And on the next page, I've included a picture of one of the neighborhoods which has a "all streets in this subdivision" sign. So we don't, if we can, and this is in Marvin, the sign is in Marvin. So if we do that, we don't have to put a speed limit sign on every street in every neighborhood, $85 per sign. We can just put one at the front and that would save a lot of money as well.
Can we get a cute sign that has like our logo on it that says Marvin subdivision speed limit?
We could, yes. The speed limit signs are customizable to an extent. Obviously, this is one that was installed by DOT, so it looks like standard.
Can we find out how much the cutlets are?
And we can start our branding?
I mean, all we have to really do is put our seal on it.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Doesn't have to be extravagant.
I mean, at least find out what the cost is.
They have an interesting sign as you come into Seabrook that basically is, to your point, Ken, kind of along, is more personalized to the community about slowing down while you're in the community. And to Rohit's point, if we put it at all access points, kind of a reminder, that would certainly be a lot less than-
I like it.
Putting on each entrance and exit of every neighborhood. Because we have a 16, 17 neighborhoods.
Yeah, but many of them already have speed limit signs.
Whatever's in our system is the only one that we can change.
Right, so we can only put them on streets in our system and that's less than 10.
Yeah. But I would be in agreement of having a blanket for all Marvin communities. But it's a certain thing and then you have just a kind of a gentle reminder as you're coming into Marvin from Waxaw Marvin Road or wherever you're in, or a reminder to slow it down and stuff like that.
Is that going to require a text amendment?
The speed, changing the speed limits from 35 to 25 is a text amendment.
Okay, so that'll get a planning board first?
No, because it's not a zoning text amendment. Only zoning marks go to planning.
So then that, so we can get that on the consent agenda?
Can text amendments go on the consent agenda?
Okay, so do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to change the ordinance from, for all neighborhoods to 25 miles an hour? I don't know what else, I don't know.
Well, how about, we'll come up with something at a staff level and we'll put it not in the consent agenda.
Okay, perfect. Then we can talk about it. Perfect. And then in the meantime, can you look into the cute little stop signs or speed limit signs? Come on, let's figure it out. Let's make it cute. Have our seal on it.
I'll take a picture of that and send it to you, Rohit.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to kind of do that.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think it's great. I think we should absolutely slow the speed wherever we can. And so you'll let these neighborhoods that have requested this know that we are-
Yes, we'll communicate with them.
All right, very good. All right, thank you. Next up, discussion of village center renderings and distribution. These are good. Rohit?
So-
You're up.
Yeah, I need to get some off the screen here.
Okay.
So as Rohit's preparing, if council members, a couple of months ago, we had requested some action for someone to just kind of come up with some conceptual plans for the Village Center District. Again, these are merely conceptual. We're, you know, all options are still on the board. This is just kind of some ideas, some thoughts for what, you know, someone else, a third party, found as an opportunity for different types or aesthetics. Nothing here is-
See, this is not, nothing has been approved, nothing is. And I need some, I need some additional direction on where some of these things are. Because I'm like, how many roads are there?
So nothing, and just to reiterate, nothing within this district has been approved as far as allowable uses, site plans, anything. So these are really just high-level conceptual ideas, just to kind of give you some graphics as to looking forward to what you guys are, how you envision this.
I mean, I do like it. Okay, so can we go over the first picture? Because I'm like super confused about where this is. The left property. Because there's a whole bunch of streets and I'm very confused about what's coming off to the left.
Streets are new streets. What's coming off to the left is going to be towards Argerie's property. And I actually have that rendering here. So I'm going to pass that out and I'm also going to put screen share it in just a second, so.
So would these buildings be right here?
Yeah, those buildings would be across the street, right?
Right here?
Right.
Okay, all right. I got it. And then we've got something down here. Okay.
There's going to, I'm going to also pass out a rendering that shows all of it put together.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so-
It would, it would help me from a standpoint of looking at the first few pictures, Lett VCD concept and Adventure VCD concept. What, what roads are what?
He's going to, he's carrying to show you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm getting ready, okay, so-
Because that's what I had a question on too.
He's going to do a screen share job.
I got, I got confused too. Which is not hard to do, but.
Yeah, give me one second. Did I not stop the screen share last time?
All right, that's Marvin's Road. That's Waxaw Marvin and this is Newtown over here. All right.
Okay, one second. Ah, where's my mouse? Okay. Oh, jeez.
I don't see anything on here for the other two, the large parcels, actually.
Where?
Oh, Dell's and Prebus.
Yeah, Prebus and Odell.
So I commissioned this like two, maybe three months ago and at that time, we were not talking about those parcels yet.
I thought Odell was doing houses.
Yeah, so what happened to those houses is that Metalark Lane is not, Metalark HOA is not allowing him to build those houses, so.
Rohit, I can't hear you.
Okay.
I mean-
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to do something where I like come here and talk because I'm all the way over there.
Right.
Okay. So for Lett's house, the first one, we are, let's see. We are here at Marvin Road and Metalark Lane. And the first one, we're kind of looking at it this way, so.
So this here, so this road here, Rohit?
Mm-hmm.
Is Metalark Lane?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so the road that you see curving and going off in the Scott Lett property, that's Metalark. And then Russ Odell's like proposed road is coming off of that. But as I said-
That needs to go away now.
Yeah, that may go away. I'm not going to say needs to, but because-
I'm in, I'm in it may go away.
In a-
Per their, their agreement with each other.
Right, so-
You won't allow him any access to Metalark Lane?
They're not allowing, well, so the idea behind his subdivision was that he'd connect to the public part of Metalark. But since the roundabout is delayed, that public part is delayed and they're not allowing him to construct it. And if he doesn't start construction in a year, then his permit will expire and he has to apply all over again. So that's why he's back talking to me about other options. And the Prebus family also came wanting to be in the Village Center District. So that's how the whole conversation with Russ and Prebus's being a part of the Village Center started happening. So we're going to, so that's Marvin Road.
This is Marvin Road over there. That's why he's being so mean with the things that he's on. Finch.
And this is Newtown?
Yes, this is Newtown.
So can we get some of those conceptual drawings? Can we have who you had do this for Odell and Prebus's properties around the corner?
Yeah, I could do that. I think I'd have to have a new contract.
Okay.
So this, so this one would be?
That's, no, that's Metalark. That exists. That will be the new Metalark, you know, real line.
Entrance into the neighborhood, okay.
Right, yeah.
It will go into the traffic circle.
So, okay, so if we're looking at the first picture, Mr. Mayor and Bob, are you guys kind of oriented to the first, like, couple of pictures now?
I believe, yeah, I pretty much see it. It's basically, if I'm looking at the first picture of Lett, the house, not the barn, but the house is, is existing house now.
About, about, yeah.
Yes, and then the house next to it is designed to look like his existing house. And that's the kind of the concept of this district where all existing houses would be retrofitted and all new buildings would look like existing buildings.
Okay. So on this, on the screen up here, show me how like, because obviously I feel like the pond that's kind of up at the top, right? Nope, the other one, keep going.
This one.
Yeah, that's in Metalark.
That's in Metalark, right.
Okay, so where's the line that has Mr. Lett's property that's kind of, that you would kind of go in? Like that way in?
The, the property, you mean entrance?
No.
No.
Kind of where's, I know, sorry, I'm not asking it.
Lett's property boundaries.
Yeah, where on, on the backside, yeah, on that side, where is it?
Okay.
No.
Oh, no, so you don't, you don't want that.
Yeah, flip me back around. Keep going. Okay, there. So the right pond is in Metalark.
Yes.
If we go left, where does Mr. Lett's property start? Nope, just, just a little bit over left.
Draw out Lett's property.
Okay, yeah, I can draw out Lett's property on this, if, I think that's-
Yeah, that's what, I want to see like where does Mr. Lett's property start over in this vicinity? Like over here.
He's drawing it out, so he can roughly see.
Thank you. That's what I want to see.
Yeah, all of the wood.
Okay. So that's, yeah, there we go. That's Scott Lett's property outlined. So to the right of it is Metalark and to the left of it is Three Pond Acres. And another concept that you can see in that rendering is Planning Board's idea of transitional density, where they wanted to put rural density housing in the back. So, so this area, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but this area back here,
Yeah.
they put rural density housing adjacent to Metalark.
Yeah.
And then the more courtyards style housing in the middle and then commercial in the front.
Oh, wait, there's stuff in the way back.
So Rohit, just for clarity's sake, this depiction that you have is obviously not to scale. The road is not in Lett's property. I know you just quickly did that.
Say that again?
Right here. This is not Lett's property right here. This is the Metalark subdivision.
I think that's the anger.
You're not showing the rural property.
So at least it's more like this, okay.
No, that's the, that's the appeal.
I'm sorry. Several people were talking to me. What was that?
I was saying, you're not showing the rural properties in the very back. You're just showing the properties around the lake.
No, you can look at them. If you look at that picture, Mr. Mayor, there in the way back of that, at the very top of that page, you can see them.
It's like three or four houses.
I missed them too.
Okay, there, I only see three homes there, sorry.
Oh, it looks like there's one, two, or four, five.
Well, the backside of the circle, there's four and then there's two in the cul-de-sac that would fit that description.
Yeah.
They back up to, to Metalark.
Okay. And are we, all right, yeah, okay.
I mean, again, this is all conceptual stuff.
Yeah, this is all conceptual, but this is, this is, the point of this was to show the visual, you know, the visual of what Planning Board is talking about to the public, you know. I think that one of the main concerns people had were that there's a lot of development going on. But when you see the, the renderings here, you, you can see that it's got a, you know, a small-town feel. There's not actually much commercial going in here. If you see that only the front buildings are commercial and everything else is residential, you'll really kind of understand how little commercial there actually is going to be.
This is just-
And what, what are those homes around the lake? What would they, those are all?
Those may be courtyard-style homes. That's what Scott Lett wants. But another idea is even if we do have some, some like patio home density locally, the overall residential density would still be one lot per acre. So if you count the homes, you could see there is only 20-something homes in his 26 acres.
So he has by right property, the ability to do that anyway?
Yeah, he, he has by right to build 20 houses on his 26 acres today. But the Village Center zoning would allow him to build patio homes in a small area, dedicate like 15% or so to public open space, which is that, which is that kind of area in the, the front of the houses between the commercial and then-
Like here?
Yeah.
And, and that's kind of what the, the group that we met with last week or whenever it was, the-
CNI.
Committee is talking about. That I was not sure where we would put the age-restricted, if you will, because that, we talked about that not affecting traffic as much. But that may be a good location or an area because you wouldn't really see it other than the, what appears to be the cut-in road to get back there. And then it appears to be another barn-type facility that faces Newtown Road. So I'm just wondering about how that appearance changes or, you know, with what the rendition you have here and stuff, if that were to go forward. But I, I mean, there could be potential, in my view, for mixed-use, like patio-type homes. And when we're talking patio, we're talking age-restricted, correct?
Yes, that's most likely. It's, well-
Because I think that's where the other group, the group we talked to last week themselves was going. And we haven't seen their report.
I'll, I'll touch on that report. I have it in my planner's report to just let you know exactly what happened. But the people that did the workshop, they'll be submitting a report to us.
All right, so just looking at, looking at these, the renderings, I mean, I think it's a, it's a really good start and I really like it. My only thing is, the only thing that I don't like about this first Lett property is I do not like these parking lots in the front. It looks like most of the rest of them are in the back.
Yeah, and I guess the thing about that is we're, we're also talking about having commercial activity be only in the front 300 feet. But since Scott Lett's house is already pushed really far into the lot, there would be a lot of wasted potential if we put the parking lots behind that.
Okay, can we not flip, at least flip-flop the, the other ground?
Yeah, you could, you could. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be able to revise the renderings, but-
No, 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 that's totally fine. I'm just saying, I really like how like everything's kind of hidden and the buildings are in the front. It looks, you know, I love this streetscape-like look of everything. I think that's great.
Was there, so what about putting the, instead of the parking lot being in the front of Mr. Lett's house, what about on the backside of it, between that access road and house, where it runs?
That's a possibility.
North, south versus east, west, which would take it off of the, the main, where you're not looking at a parking lot.
Are you talking about here?
Yeah, just, just taking this and going this way.
Oh, yeah, that, okay, that way, okay.
And then, and then give a little more buffer in the front, which would give a lot less visual impact on Newtown.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I think this is, I think this is great. It shows that it's low-density, it's not, there's nothing crazy going on. Do you have any next questions on this?
Ross, I have a question. Per, you know, the Planning Board, you know, discussion and the land use plan, the, just curious, the, the two buildings that Councilman Vanberg's talking about and then of course putting those parking lot here, was the upper level considered for where there would be like apartments, that sort of thing on the upper levels of those, those buildings or just the one make over to the, you know, the left side? Is that kind of consideration for that? Just curious.
It is, it is, it is a consideration. It's been, it's been on the table and the Planning Board hasn't discussed that yet. But, but yes, if the, uh, commercial were to be only on the first floor, but we want two-story looking houses to match other two-story houses in the area, then the second floor could be, um, separately accessed residential units.
All right, I'm just letting it out there. I don't like that idea. I'm just so.
That's fine. Everything is still on the table and that.
I'm just putting it out there.
That again is the point of this exercise, you know? We, we created these, um, renderings based on what we were thinking at the time. And there's plenty of opportunity for all of you, the Planning Board, anyone, residents, to, to find something that they don't like about what they see and then tell us and then we can revise it. Maybe in six months, we can have a new round of renderings that will be much more, uh, much closer to what we're, um, thinking of adopting.
So just curious, um, why would you be opposed to upstairs residential?
I don't like it. I don't know. I just don't think that's.
I mean, there's a, a lot of places where the shop owner lives above their shop. I mean, it's just a, you get to keep an eye on your shop at all times.
Yeah, I don't know. I just don't like it.
There are actually a couple of Matthews that are like that on one little strip where they have.
I thought that I was in the, uh, land use plan. They did talk about that.
They, they may have, I'm just saying, my personal preference, I don't like that.
I pretend to agree initially unless you were to show me and take me to a place to say, okay, how does this work? And I think that is, what's, what's the place up north? I think they have that, um, north of here in Charlotte.
Burkeville Village, Barbie said.
Burkeville Village, yeah, which is way over more than what we would ever want. But I think I, I did a tour there a couple of years ago and, you know.
Well, there's an example on John Street and Matthews too, Joe. It's very short little strip. It's not much. It's just, I think there may be six storefronts.
Sounds like it's time for a field trip for me.
You have to come back to town for that.
It's a little more commercial in, in Matthews. Uh, the design is a little more commercial for my taste for here, but the concept is the same. Seems like, yeah. It's like there's a lot of wasted space, um, behind the, the old storefronts. Those lots are so deep.
Well, there is a wetland area, so it may not be developable.
So there's a lot more steps that remain as far as making decisions on above shop living and, you know, allowable uses and that sort of thing. But Rohit, what, what are you looking to achieve from this?
Right, so this rendering is, this discussion is meant to be the discussion of the renderings and not the Village Hall, the center itself. What I'm, I'm requesting is your, your guidance on how we go forward now that we have these renderings of, with the renderings themselves. Like, do we distribute them? Do we hold on to them? Do we show them when people ask?
Oh, yes. I think we, this should be a blurb.
This should be a blurb?
I think this should be a blurb. Here are some renderings, but I, but especially for this property, you need to be more specific, because I was super confused. If you can get like road names in.
Yeah, I can do that.
Then that would be super helpful, because I was like, okay, where, where am I?
And I could probably put.
He got to remember that roundabout doesn't exist.
Right, I noticed that that's a, that's a future roundabout, yeah, future.
Would you just rather keep that one out for now and just?
No, I, I think, I think put it, I think put it out there and I think you put everything that you've got in a blurb and say, hey, here's some, here's some ideas. This is not approved, you know, bold letters. This is not approved. Here are renderings. Tell me what you think.
The only thing I.
We want feedback, right? That's really what we're, that's what, what we want.
I mean, that, that, that's the most important thing for, you know, for everyone else and, you know.
I would even.
Go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
Well, I was just going to say, I, I'm, I'm not, not in favor of that. But would this be something that'd be better saved possibly for the Town Hall that we could actually describe and answer questions? I mean, just asking.
I think, well, what I was getting ready to say was I would get these blown up with street names on them and have them on big boards. And I absolutely, Bob, think that we should have it at the Town Hall so that we can talk about it. But I think that we distribute it now, because what's gonna happen is somebody's gonna get ahold of these and they're gonna mark them up and they're gonna send them out and they're gonna say, look, it's gonna be a wall art there or whatever it is. So we should be putting these out to the public first and say, hey, here are some ideas. These are concepts, renderings. Tell us what you think. We're going to discuss this more in depth with you at the Town Hall that we're going to hold. But we can also talk about it in our coffee with council meetings.
I think this should be put up.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, that's why.
Way to get started, to get, give some people some ideas just to get started.
Hundred percent, yes.
And, and, you know, one just suggesting, to Kim's point earlier, and I don't like to see that those parking things up front. Maybe reconsider putting those behind or something where we can kind of, you know, change. I mean, that, that, that doesn't look like Marvin when you're coming down Newtown Road.
I agree. That's, that's why I was like, I just don't like that.
So, I mean, like I said, that's not something I can change in the renderings right now because the contract is over. Um, but that, it is a good idea, um, I mean, to have that discussion.
Yeah.
For you to be able to look at, you know, this versus that and say, I like this, I don't like that.
Yep.
And I'm, so I'm, I'm not saying I support parking lots in the front. I'm saying if you leave that as an option for people to say that.
The people may overwhelmingly come back and say, I hate that.
Right, and then it's obviously not gonna be in the final product.
Right. But yes, I think, I think this needs to be a blurb, but I think if you could put street names in there, that would be great. So I would like that to be done. I would like these to be blown up and put on big boards. And then when people come in, hey, here's what we're looking at doing. Come in and check it out. Come in and have a conversation. Email us, call us. Um, but then also if you can, um, and Chrissy, I don't think you're in here when I said this earlier. If we could get Odell and Prebus's, like, properties, so I think we're, we'll have to enter into a new contract.
Yeah.
But I would love to see kind of how that would continue down Newtown Road.
Um, yeah, that's doable.
I like, I like your ideas, both Jamie and Kim, uh, about the big boards and having them there. I would preface it with maybe big headers, ideas are free, um, so people don't get scared and feel free to comment on, you know, what they like, what they don't like.
Hundred percent.
As we, you know, get through this, we'll, we'll, we'll work this out with a bunch of public information.
Hundred percent.
Public meetings and stuff, so.
And I, I really think we should probably start that process at the Town Hall. And then right after the Town Hall, we should have like a public input meeting.
Yeah.
After we give them all the information, then let's have, let's start inviting people in to have that, those conversations. And continue to drive this.
My, my take on, I, I think you did a great job in rendering, but just.
Thanks.
Pass that along.
Yeah. I, I think what's, what would be equally concerning, looking at these, as the buildings and the structures themselves would be the parking lots. I, when I view this and I kind of think of it, I, I don't know if those of you have been to Blowing Rock. You have all of the shops. They're all unique little tiny shops. There's no Walmarts, there's no Targets, but.
No mattress stores.
No mattress stores, and I don't think they had an Asian spa.
Probably not.
Could be wrong. But there, all the parking was very nondescript. I mean, it was all.
In the back.
Very tastefully done in the back.
Yeah.
You can find parking. There was plenty of parking. So maybe when there's, when we, you know, when we can make some type of adjustments or whatever to.
Some shared.
Create.
Shared spaces, yeah.
And I don't even know how you, how you create where you have some like this and you put in like, you know, trees, trees that go in. I, I know I'm adding to it, but that first impression of what we pass out to everyone, even in potential renderings or renderings that we're gonna pass out, they're going to create a, a, you know, a perception right off the bat. And as, I would rather take the extra time to.
I think that one's the best one, to show kind of the buffering with the trees and stuff around the parking lots. The other ones don't have near as much of that, and I think that that's probably the best one.
The one she's pointing to for the people, uh, for you guys, I don't think they can see her screen.
Oh, you can't see me?
But they can see the screen. The one on the left on my screen is the one that.
Oh, yeah, that's one I'm looking at. Like, see how they've got the tree kind of buffers and all that? I feel like that's more kind of Jamie, what you're talking about.
Yeah, let's, I would take the extra time.
Any of our, uh, I don't have that one up in my packet.
Um, it's not in the packet, but it's on my screen.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
It's the left one.
My, my, my point.
Marvin School Road, or Marvin Town Hall.
That one is the Audrey prop, the one on the left is the Audrey property. So the roundabout is the future Marvin Road, um.
Newtown Roundabout.
Okay, I'm gonna slow down now. So the one on the left is the Audrey?
Is the Audrey property. Um, the green, the, the bluish greenish house on the far, the right of that picture is the existing house.
Next door to the church.
Yes, and the roundabout, the roundabout with the splitters is the future Marvin Road Roundabout. And the, the roundabout in front of that house is the existing driveway for that house.
Well, that just seems like a lot on that corner, but I get it, I get it. Um, I mean, the only thing that worries me too, and, and this is for another discussion and stuff, is if we go this route and, and do these, these renderings and we start going in a direction, um, what does that signage look like as you're driving by? Is it, you know, um, because everyone's gonna wanna know what's in there. If I go back in there by just going, driving by it, then, and the shop owners, if anyone, are gonna want you to know. And what does that look like and how do we do it? And I know we spent a lot of time with, uh, that at Marvin Gardens.
Shingles.
What that signage is. So that's the only thing that I get a little bit stoned about.
Marquee.
Takes away from the aesthetic appeal.
If you wanna definitely be a marquee, you don't want anything big.
Yeah, like shingles, Joe, kind of like for what we have for Town Hall.
Right, so I would take the, the Hilton Head philosophy.
Yes.
Of saying, everything is there, but you're gonna have to get out of your car and find out what it is.
Yeah.
And you're, you're walking the shops anyway, so.
Yeah. So, so Jamie, before we put these renderings out, do you wanna, because we're, we're asking you, Rohit, to go back to your person and, and enter into the contract to do the other stuff. Do you want these renderings to have more buffers around the parking lots before we put them out?
I, I would.
Okay.
I'm just trying to give us the, the best shot of giving a good rendering.
Okay.
Positive rendering.
Yeah.
It starts the discussion, um, I agree, yeah. And just to be clear, what's on the right am I looking at on the screen?
So on the right is the, uh, kind of a zoomed out, uh, roundabout to roundabout vision of, uh, this, uh, area. And again, this was two months ago before we talked, we started talking about Prebus and Odell's property. But, um, all of the other five renderings put together, um, is this kind of zoomed out, um, overall picture of the Village, uh, Center. And obviously it doesn't show the neighborhoods that were, because they're like, the, the preserve and the province down south is there. We're kind of looking southwards in the, in the orientation that's there. So if you have a printout, you might be able to flip it northwards if you want. But, um, so, so the preserve is below you, um, uh.
That green spot is, is Town Hall. That'll give you an idea.
Yeah, yeah, that, that green spot in the middle is the current Grove, the area next to our Town Hall. Um, let's see.
So Rohit.
That's Methodist Church, yeah.
So Rohit, can you do that? Can you have, I mean, obviously, so do we need to make a motion to enter into a contract to update the renderings?
Yeah, I think that's our next step. Before we go and put it all out to the public, I'd like to refine the renderings just a little bit.
Okay.
Um, just give them a little bit better.
Okay, can we, can we have that done by the July fourteenth meeting?
Hmm, the July fourth meeting?
The contract, yes.
Oh, the contract, yeah.
No, no, the renderings.
The renderings themselves.
We would have to have the contract.
Yeah, can we, can we get the contract approved July fourteenth and then?
Can we not approve the contract today?
We don't have that from this.
Oh, I'm sorry. You, you just need the motion for, okay.
We have to put it on the next meetings.
I really don't wanna wait another month, because I.
Yeah, but I think, so I think you need a little bit of an update on this though before we put it to the public. This is very rough and we've already seen some issues.
All right, so email blurb will be, renderings are coming. Be on the lookout. We're, we're working on them. We're excited to show them to you.
Years of.
Yeah.
There's, I guess there's one other, I guess, one other option that we could look at.
This is kind of what we're working on.
Yeah, you could show the big one.
Yeah.
Right, because that's not gonna kind of go in.
But we still need to update that, because when you, like that, like the area, I, when I'm looking at some.
You're like, there's a lot of parking lots?
Where, right, but if I'm looking at this, if I know that that's the church, because everything is really kind of centered off the church, if I know that that's the church and that's current Village Hall.
So we need some landmarks on here.
You need some landmarks. Where, where this one, this one says.
Yeah.
Waxall Marvin.
You can add street names to this, yeah?
I can add text and stuff. I can add landmark labels and stuff. I can do that.
Do that for this one and say, hey, this is, this is kind of where we're starting, but we're gonna have more coming soon. We're working on them, but we wanted to give you guys a heads up on kind of where we're like going. That's good, but put some landmarks in there.
Emphasize it's very stark.
Very stark, early, early.
And Kim, maybe a, a teaser for Coffee with Council.
Yes, yes, I like it.
Heads up or a preview of what we're thinking before the renderings go out. And then, you know, it just builds upon that, maybe gives them another reason to come in and get a sneak preview.
Cool, okay. I like that, I like that. Okay, so I need to make them, or I need someone to make them. I like to make them. Sorry. All right, so I'd like to make a motion for us to work on a contract with the person that did the renderings to kind of update the renderings and then add the Odell and Prebus properties.
As, as new renderings.
As new renderings. I need a motion.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Sorry.
I'd like to go back to the, the, to, when, when I look at the, when I look at these renderings.
Yeah, I gotta say it out loud.
Especially the one at the, at the bottom here.
Which one?
Um, the Finch property.
Yeah.
Or, and, and this one.
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Audrey property.
When I'm looking at that, I do see the two-story.
Yeah.
Um, and I see the two-story here.
Yeah.
When I see that, I see a, I don't see quaint little shops. I see something larger. You know, are these continuous shops, you know, again, in my mind, I'm just going, because I'm not very good at doing this kind of stuff. However, what I think of Blowing Rock and I think of the shops, the shops are, you know, they're kind of continuous. Um, some of them are connected, some of them are not, but they're, they're smaller. I don't remember seeing, I know there's one or two that has it upstairs in it just because. But most of them are small and quaint shops. I mean, they're not.
So more like the Crane Road, the Crane, the Crane House down here.
Crane House, I think, when you start, to me, I'd walk in that all day. I'd love that.
Yeah, be like, what's, what's in here?
This, I, that, that, if I'm, if I'm the public, I'm looking at this and I'm going, I could put a, I could put a Denny's in one of those. And now it's here.
Right.
You know, because I think when you tie it all together, there's some, you know, we look at the corner, we might talk about food trucks or, and some places for an ice cream shop or just something basic. If I want a full-blown meal, then I'm gonna go to Waxall, I'm gonna go to Blakeney. But if I'm just gonna keep the quaintness of Marvin, I don't know that that is the, the appropriate rendering of the shop.
So.
Front, I'm, I agree with you on, but I think that, I think we have the potential on the, the Audrey property back here by the pond to actually have a, a decent, small restaurant on the water there, which would be not, not at all intrusive, because it sits way back on the water.
That's fair.
I think that's a really good opportunity. But I agree that these, these big, and these are not, these are drawn like way out of scale too, I believe. It looks like really big in, in scale.
Right.
But I do agree that the, that, um, uh, that, that, that they should be a smaller presentation from the road. um, that, that, that they should be a smaller presentation from the road.
So may, so, so maybe, maybe this one, the streetscape, they look smaller.
Right, so there, there you go.
So that's probably a better, because if you look at, if you look at the streetscape, the house, the, the building on the right, that is Venture's property.
Yeah.
And then if you look at Venture's first thing on the big one, it looks huge, but here, like, small.
Right, so just, just kind of tying in a consistent.
Yeah.
Because you said, well, I thought, that doesn't look like that.
Right.
So what, what am I getting here?
Right.
And, and again, when you start talk, when you start to, when you start handing these out, you're, you're, you know, you're gonna get a lot of different opinions. But staying everything consistent and giving them something that is, what we've always said, is something that's quaint.
Small scale.
Small scale, you're not gonna, that's not gonna be a Denny's, that's not gonna be a, all of the love.
I want Denny's.
I want it too.
Nothing against Denny's, but.
So do you want?
Other than the colors.
So I would, I would have in the contract, I would have the, um, the buildings smaller.
Yeah.
And the, yeah, the representation of, of these.
Small, cause I, I see what Jamie's saying, and that makes sense, yeah.
One-story building.
Yeah, but to your point, Jamie, too, if I'm looking on the screen on the picture on the right, which is the, um, I'm looking at the Audrey location, I believe that's eleven acres in that area, and I'm counting almost ten or eleven buildings right in there that, you know, I'm thinking, is that really what we're what we're after, but, you know, something's maybe a little bit toned down or.
Yeah, but there's.
It's looking at the one on the right.
No, he's, yeah, eleven building, he's talking, no, he's talking about the Audrey property, he's saying the town.
Yeah.
Oh, no, he is, cause it's going around the corner.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
That texture has houses.
There's a couple of houses in the back that aren't here, actually.
Are those existing houses?
No, no, those are proposed houses.
That's only eleven acres on that corner, I believe.
That would be tough to do.
And you're showing ten buildings right there.
But that's, that's what the Audrey property, uh, the people who bought it were talking to me about, they said they wanted to put two houses back there and live there.
Hey, I wanna do a lot of things too when I buy a piece of property, and what I'm saying is, it may not be in line with the, 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 you know, the village is after.
Sir Mayor's getting spicy there.
God looks for it upon its core.
Well, alright, so. That's way back down behind the pond, those two houses too, which they wouldn't be seen, but the other thing is, is I don't even know if it's, I've walked that property, and, and I don't even know if that's even feasible back there to.
Yeah.
On that backside of that dyke, I mean, it's, it's a hole, and that's where our trail goes as well, down through there, and it's, I don't know if it's even buildable, so.
Well.
And there's a dam issue back there too.
Yes.
Joe. Really?
He meant like dam.
I know.
There are a lot of dam issues.
I know. I was trying to be funny, I know what he meant.
So is the consensus of the board to get the contractor to reduce the size of the houses?
Yes, and add some tree buffers and include Odell and previous properties.
Yes.
Okay, and I just had one question, just for those that are listening, um, there's been a lot of discussion about landscaping and, you know, types of businesses, Denny's, Walmarts, that sort of thing, aesthetics, parking, can you tell us real fast where we're at in the process and what is to be made in terms of are certain types of businesses already allowed to be allowed there?
Right, so obviously these renderings don't depict what kinds of businesses would be allowed, but we're kind of really very at the beginning, I mean, not even maybe, not even started with, um, figuring out what businesses would be allowed, although the vision is to allow only the most, you know, least impact, you know, like, small-scale things like restaurants and maybe specialty stores, but not anything big bucks, but there's nothing been decided yet in the planning board. Uh, although the discussion of how we would enforce that has been started in the planning board, and that would be kind of the same way as Marvin Gardens, where in the zoning document itself, there is a, a list of approvable uses for tenants, and, and there are also zoning envelopes. So in different areas of Marvin Gardens, there are different uses allowed. Um, that is the same, um, principle that we wanna take going into this district, where in the fringe areas, they're thinking of having even lighter commercial uses, um, and, and for, for things such as, um, TJ Philbrick's house, he wants to have it in an engineering office. There is a, there is a way, the zoning envelopes.
So we could have some like professional services as well, not just retail.
Right, right.
So it doesn't even look, it's not retail, it doesn't even look like a business, other than maybe a small sign on the porch or something, still looks like, yeah.
Right. Right.
Shingle.
Shingle.
Right, yeah.
You could shingle.
It looks like a house, except for a small sign with the business name in front of it.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that works, I mean, that's, that's the lowest impact that you could possibly get, you wouldn't even know it's anything other than, just looking at it.
Mm-hmm. Right. Right.
However, on the survey, that was not supported, if you looked at the survey, the offices and stuff like that was very low. You know, if I read that correctly, I'm not sure, but, um, but I, I like the idea.
It was lower on the list, but I think that, you know, I don't think the whole downtown area needs to be professional services, but I think that there can be some improvement there.
Right. In, in fact, you could take that, you could take that part of the survey as kind of like a, a distribution of what they want to see, like, obviously people wanna see more green space, and, um, and public open space, they, you would put more of that. They wanna see less offices, but that doesn't mean you put no offices, because then a district like this wouldn't work. There's a huge opportunity for even Marvin residents to have offices in this district, so.
Yeah. But I feel like the little.
But we have fewer support the, the retail part of it too.
Correct.
Correct, and I feel like the little brick house across the street, they wanna do some sort of professional services out of that.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Right.
If I.
And, and the fringes would actually, would feather, feather the commercial into the residential with a, a nice transition where, instead of having a
I think they wanna do a coffee shop or something.
Oh, okay.
Right.
An ice cream shop, a house, you know, cause I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna live next to a retail establishment, but I wouldn't mind living next to a lawyer's office.
Right. Totally. Right.
And then having an ice cream shop on the other side of that, you know, and if I'm an attorney, I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with having an ice cream shop next door.
With an ice cream shop next door.
Right, that was one of the things that came out of, uh, the CPNI workshop too, the idea that on the west side, so the Audrey side, Marvin roadside, there are people that live on Mar, uh, Newtown Road that wanna stay there, and, uh, so having that side be predominantly offices, if not completely offices, um, would significantly reduce the impact of commercial activity next to their house.
Right.
Whereas then having the predominantly traditional retail-type things on the east side, where nobody lives on Marvin Road, except for Scott White, who is actually fine with being, you know, commercial development, um, so that would be fine, because no one lives immediately on Newtown Road to be disturbed.
What about, what about, uh, Mr. Zimmer's property over there, if we, you know, with this, with, with the, uh, it's, with the left property, right, or no, the Venture property backing up, I, you know, we don't wanna.
Uh, the, the Venture, right, so. Right, that, and that's, that's one of the things with transitional, uh, density, so having only, um, residences or significant buffers along, adjacent to existing, um, homeowners, and in this, and in the big picture, you can see that, um, I've reserved the, the fifteen percent of park space to be at the end, where, uh, that would, that would, uh, serve as a significant distance between
Yeah, that against his property.
that Zimmer property and the first use in Venture's property.
Well, and because there's a buffer off of that property too, right, right there.
Right, yeah.
No, this is, this is, this is Broadmore, there's, there's, the Zimmer property is between Broadmore and Ventures.
Oh, that's Broadmore, that's where I'm, sorry, sorry. Okay, okay, alright.
So the point being that there's a lot of things that have to be decided.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was the original question that Christina was asking, um, for me to answer, is, is everything is very early on, and again, the point of these renderings are for you to see not just preliminary.
Options, it's kind of, kind of a start.
Yeah, preliminary was being discussed, but also they are, the planning board is ready to shoot holes in it, as one planning board member said, right, so they're ready, you know, you know, they're ready to say, you know, this is where we're at, public come one, come all, and tell us what you don't like.
Okay, good, alright, so everybody has their marching orders for this stuff, okay. Alright, moving on, discussion and consideration of Union County Sheriff's Office.
Excuse me, I didn't hear a vote based on this motion for the contract?
No, we voted on it, it passed. Andy, Andy sec, uh, made the motion, or so moved it, and we all voted on it. Okay, discussion and consideration of Union County Sheriff's Office, or Sheriff Hours, sorry, Christine?
Yes, so in your agenda packets, I just put in a little memo that's basically asking you guys what the hours, um, that you would recommend for the new officer that's starting in the next couple of days, um, we have sat down with their command staff, and we have come up with, um, just a general idea of having coverage Monday through Friday from seven AM to seven PM, and then Saturdays and Sundays from nine to nine, and this is basically, um, looking at the peak times of when, when we have the most calls, just making sure we have coverage during those, those days and times. Um, this is what we recommend, unless y'all have other recommendations, this is what we're gonna go with.
I mean, I would like that, kind of like, on like a, you know, that's kind of what the schedule is, but then I would like occasionally for there to be some overnight.
Okay.
Uh, patrolling being done, cause I know some, we've had lots of car break-ins and stuff at night, so I would like there to be some overnight, early morning, kind of.
And those would be primarily focused in neighborhoods, cause we don't really have.
Correct. Right.
I mean, you know, me and my crazy neighbors are deterrents to people breaking in our property, but, but, but neighborhoods have a tendency to have a lot more of the, the, the car break-ins and stuff.
Correct.
Although we have had one.
Yeah, I think that would be, I, I think, I mean, I think the schedule is good, like, for like a norm, but then I would like to see some overnight, early mornings.
That they rotate through, kind of like a.
Yeah. We'll make it happen, okay.
But that sounds good, that, that's.
Do you need us to vote on this?
No, that's.
Okay, alright, uh, Mr. Mayor Bob, getting issues on that?
No, I, I would agree, I, when I saw it, first off, I'm, I'm very pleased at the amount of coverage and time, seven, you know, for seven days, I mean, that's just great. That's what we want. Um, if we were to use this, for example, in a blurb of some sort, uh, to your point, uh, Kim, that, that I'm sitting there going, well, it'd be nice to have it staggered, so nobody knows when there is patrol on, so, uh, I like what you just said, like, I think it's great.
Good, awesome, and Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I, I, I concur with, uh, Mr. Councilman Mark Elise on that, and you, and angling up a little bit.
Okay. Alright, very good, alright, moving on, discussion of cost share partnership for crosswalks along Joe Carr Road. Christina?
Christina, so basically, I did meet with the neighborhood HOA presidents along Joe Carr Road, and they have interest in assisting with the crosswalks. We initially discussed, just doing the one crosswalk at Marvin Creek, which was right at the Wheaton Field, um, intersection?
Yeah, Wheaton Drive.
Wheaton, okay, um, but as we had discussions, they would like to see the three crosswalks be implemented at the same time. So they're willing to help, they, they kind of need to know from us what, what financially we are able to contribute, and I need to get our engineer to look to see what it's gonna, the cost savings are gonna be to, um, get this done at the same time, cause there will be some cost savings. We will continue to have these discussions, we're not gonna start these discussions until July first, pending, uh, you know, our budget issues that I just mentioned, so this is, um, an area where we, we'll start this project back in July to get our engineer to come up with some costs. They also would like to see some in-road lighting.
Two, three?
So, yeah.
Crossing?
They're talking one, and two, and three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but they do have interest, they do, you know, they do wanna know what our level of financial input would be, so that they could base, you know, what they need to do on their end to get um, financial input. So one of the other questions, and this will be a, you know, a, event that we bring up in the July work session as well, but in the meantime, I pass out some of their requests and my responses to their requests, they want to see the reduction of the speed limit on Joe Carr Road, I'm sorry, the reduction of the, the passing zones, um.
I mean, that's ridiculous, I, when I was told that there was a passing zone on Joe Carr Road, I could not believe it, that's a thirty-five mile an hour zone, and you've got passing lanes that are passing areas, that's, that's ridiculous.
Cause these are country roads that haven't been updated to neighborhood roads, so that was what was there, and DOT maintains it.
I know. Yeah. I know, I think that's bonkers, though. I just feel like we can make that request, can't we?
Yes, we can, and I just wanted to get direction from you all.
I'm a hundred percent fine with making that request. Anybody else, anybody got a problem with that?
Yeah. No, no.
No, not for me.
Okay.
So we'll make that request to DOT, they also specifically asked for more signage on Joe Carr Road, I'm not really sure exactly what they're looking for here, so I've asked for some, some more information on what, what signs, because.
In terms of speed limit signs?
It just says we would like more signage all over Joe Carr Road, I don't know what that means, um.
Alright, me neither, let's find out.
Yeah, and, and we can make that request to, to DOT, however, DOT is not, they're not apt to to getting signs, I mean, we've, we've asked for a lot of things, um. Yes, um.
Oh, and they would like the four, four-stop signs, can we, I mean, I know those are DOT roads, can we, like?
And all those intersections?
No, in their neighborhoods.
Oh.
We cannot do anything with the roads that are not ours.
Right.
They would have to request that.
Yeah.
DOT is never gonna allow stop signs.
No, no, not that road, in their neighborhood, but they, but they can also purchase the slow down people and pets display signs, cause we put those in our, um, is that going down across the street?
And, yes, I'm sorry. So, you know.
Okay, so you're not gonna have the numbers, the full numbers for this until July?
Correct, yes, yeah, and we will continue to have discussions with them, um, they initially wanted to see the crossmast go up, but when we looked into them, they were like two hundred thousand dollars, and it's just not really an option, so, um.
They were talking about like the mast arm to put a hawk signal like they have at Audrey Kill High School.
Oh.
It's like, and then, um, the HOA president from Marvin Creek had this really good idea of having these little in-road lights, they actually like, they're embedded into the road, and they light up.
I can pull, I can pull that up.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. And we don't know how much that costs?
No, that's something that we'll have to get from the engineer.
Okay, so, but the other cost, we decided that for all three of them, it was what, like ninety grand?
No, we, we have not determined that, um, it's roughly thirty, forty for one, however, cause we were only looking at one, and so when they come back and, you know, they're like, we wanna do three, we, you know, we know there's gonna be a cost savings to do three at one time, but, uh, what that is, I'm not really sure, so.
Okay, but the HOAs wanna know how much we're willing to pony up in order to figure out how much they're, they can pony up?
Yes. That's right, yes.
Okay, so.
Flashing lights or just like?
It looks like they just reflect.
I mean.
Oh, you push an activate button.
Oh, so they would probably flash then?
Not sure if they flash.
In, or?
We don't even know if DOT will allow these, but it, it's a good option.
Okay, well, let's find that out, and then how much, right now, we have what, thirty thousand earmarked for pedestrian refuges, which is what I'm assuming we're changing this to?
We had estimated, I think, fifteen.
Fifteen for two years, though.
Fifteen for two of them.
Uh-uh, no, in the CIP, we plan fifteen every year, but in the budget this year, we, fifteen, yes.
Right. We have fifteen. Okay, so.
Waxall has their flags there for crossing too, that is that, I mean, wouldn't that be a, a, you know, cost-effective way to?
They have their what?
The little flags, where you cross, right there by the, at the railroad bridge, when you cross to the other side of the street, they have flags that you carry across, orange flags that you carry when you cross the street.
Shut up.
No, I've grown in that too.
You haven't, you haven't experienced that yet?
No.
People steal the flags.
Yeah.
They have, they have, they have them up at Davidson.
Really?
Yeah.
They, I mean, you, you just carry, it's a, it's a flag that's about two by two.
People are gonna steal flags. That's funny, I've never seen that, no, I'm not.
Yeah, see, there it is, on the, period.
Yeah, so.
There's a problem, you're flying, you're coming into a, a very commercial area where those flags are, but this is not, it's a a road where they fly, and all of a sudden they see someone with a flag crossing the street.
Yeah, we need a little.
I don't know if that, that's, that's gonna be effective, but, um, is this, uh, just a quick question, is this a potential, um,
With fly?
What is it, the, uh, funding we get from the, um?
Powell Bill?
Powell Bill, potential?
Yeah, you could, yes, potentially.
Yeah, we don't have any extra money there.
But it does, everything that we, I mean, when we, we talk about taking funds from Powell Bill, we can definitely apply these things, but it does impact what you're gonna do.
For your roads.
For the roads, so.
Right, right.
Well, I, I mean, I think the neighborhoods wanna know how much we're willing to pony up for this, and let's just, you know.
So we have to know what the cost works like.
Yeah, well, I'll get the cost, I'm just letting y'all know, um, that is, you know, it is an ongoing discussion and project that we're, we've got, no actions requested.
Alright, okay. Okay, so let's, uh, get the cost?
This will be back on your work session for July.
Okay, alright, next one is consider approval of proposed amendments rule fourteen of council rules of procedure. Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with this.
I'm fine with it.
Do we just need to put it on the consent agenda? Anybody got any issues? Just add up. Nope, okay, good. So I need to make a mo, or I'd like to make a motion to put on the consent agenda the proposed amendments rule 14, order of business as presented.
Some move.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, discussion and consideration of email or communication blurbs.
So in your agenda packet, Barbie's worked really hard to get the memo that kind of outlines some of the topics that y'all discussed. I've since created this little table that kind of shows you what the proposed topic is, when it's going to go out so that y'all are aware of, you know, when things are going to go out. That, that will allow us to schedule things a little bit better on our end. And then as you continue to add stuff that comes in, we'll put into these filler topics and we can designate those at future events. So unless y'all have any concerns with what's listed here as for the month of July, we'll do this again every work session before the month starts. So in July, you'll see the same thing for August and you'll be able to have input into what would go out in August.
Okay, I got extra ones to add.
I like it.
Okay, I would like to have a, we need to have a blurb that goes out that we have done proclamations for the seniors that have graduated from the high schools and they have certificates here to pick up. Because when I was in here for problem with council, that stack was huge. And people need to know that we have done that proclamation and that we are recognizing the seniors just because it's good for, for the community and for the HOA presidents of the, you know, come in and pick them up. So we should do that.
Joe had road cramps from signing them all.
I know. I like the watch, I like the watch speed on here. And I would maybe add to that of the, we are, we are planning on reducing all of our neighborhood speed limits to 25 miles an hour. Put that, go ahead and put that out there. Coffee with council dates. We need a reminder that tax day is now July 15th. Just so everybody knows.
Hey, we just got a note too that we, our Union County was the highest response rate for the census.
Oh, that's good. So maybe you can put that in there with the census.
69%, have responded in Union County.
Good, that's good.
Highest in the whole state.
You can make that note on the, when we do that topic on there. That's awesome. I still want an FAQ to go out about town hall.
It's on there.
And then, I can't believe we didn't do this last time. We need one welcoming Andy to the council. We didn't, we didn't do that. We need to, we need to make that announcement.
Still got me down here.
I know, but we need to do that.
Yeah, I was just going to bring that up. Appreciate it.
Yes, I was like, oh my goodness, we didn't do that. So we need to do that. And then maybe not, oh yeah, recipes. I had recipes on there. I said an apple pie recipe, but I don't have a good one. I'm not a baker. But I was thinking maybe an apple pie recipe. And then some summer safety tips. Stay hydrated. Wear sunscreen. Like you can just Google summer safety tips.
Those are, I'm telling you, they're great. It's great.
Mom's Corner.
Yeah.
Apple pie, sunscreen.
Yeah, I mean, something. All right, those are my
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, those were, okay, those were mine.
On, look, put that in DocOf, 5:00 PM on Friday, we need to wear masks in public in the state of North Carolina.
Oh, that's a good one.
In the state?
Yeah, in the state.
I'm a little offended you said Mom's Corner because as a stay-at-home dad, I have a lot of good recipes.
Do you have a good one for apple pie, Mr. Mayor?
No, but I have a
Cherry? Blueberry?
Not, a real simple one for, I'm not forgetting it already. I'm having an old person moment here. But I'll come up with it.
You're not that old, are you? All right, yeah, so that's great, right?
That's great.
What one, what did you guys bring to the table?
The same ones you did. Like minds here.
Yeah, all right. Okay, good. So that's good. So I mean, we should have them going out like every other day, basically, for the rest of the month. With all that.
Yeah, the thing about the masks seem to go out like, you know, today or something like that, just to remind people.
Yeah.
So when does that start?
Tomorrow.
5:00 PM tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
And it's in public. I mean, it's public, like, for example, as we're meeting now, although you and I joke and wear masks in solidarity. But everybody in group needs to wear a mask in public.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we don't have to social distance, but we wear, we wear a mask. I'm confused and I asked that question.
Yes, correct.
Crickets.
Crickets. All right, good. Are we good? All right, moving on. Discussion of organs rewrite project completion and timelines.
This is just kind of a note date.
Yeah. So the update is that we still don't have the final, like, organization. But they say they'll be done with it by June 30th. After which, I will take it from there to, to get it through the process of adoption. And I'll incorporate any revisions that the planning board and the council will have.
Does planning board get it before we do to go over?
They will, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we shouldn't see it till the fall then?
Right.
Okay, all right, cool. Anybody got any questions about that? Nope, okay, good. Discussion of traffic options due to delay of roundabout at Marvin and Newtown Road. Bob?
Thank you. First off, as you can all see, the memo that came from Sean Efferson. In the last meeting, when we all met together, Christina provided this as a possible alternative. And as we know, there is a problem with traffic. They're just as flat-out a problem. And specifically, with the delay of the roundabout, this is causing an issue, as everybody knows, on Marvin Road. As well as on, you know, Newtown, you know, either direction, but mostly on Marvin Road. When I saw this, I kind of looked at this right in, right out kind of access. And I kind of wanted to bring it up again for a discussion, which I have an ultimate solution to suggest. But when I saw this, I went, wait a minute, this might work. Let me do this. And I actually rode around the community and I actually went a right turn on from Marvin to Newtown. And then coming down from Newtown, from Village Hall and the Banks Church, making a right. And I thought, you know, that, that wouldn't be a bad idea. And then, as of what happened per COVID, the 19 situation, my wife and I, after moving here in 2017, you know, I never knew there was another access to Marvin or Marvin Road to Newtown. I realized, and I don't know if I'm giving away any secrets here, but there's obviously an access that you can go through Firethorn and then come out onto, onto Newtown. I, you know, I actually spoke with the mayor and I said, hey, what do you think about this? And he says, well, you know, simply, this is going to drive traffic through the area. And I don't know how common this is knowledge or not. I'm not going to give any names of roads. Except when I brought this up to Christina, she said, you know, and I actually spoke with Councilwoman Vanderburg. I said, what if we were to put some sort of an, if we were to do the right in, right out at Marvin and Newtown? I said, what would be where, if there were people that were knowledgeable about this access through Firethorn, why not put a sign that would say no drive-through traffic or no, something of that nature in a very tasteful way that would complement the community with, by the way, those signs with the, our logo on it? I really liked that idea. And I said, and then when they come out through and onto Newtown, they actually would have to make a right turn. Out of, and again, another big sign that would say right turn only. Well, I've been since told, and I, and I guess I was confused because I'm not even sure of the road. That shows you how secret it is and I don't even aware of it. That I was looking at the woodland road, I was thinking, well, that's on Union County side door. And I was told that, no, you can't do a right turn out of that, you know, the Firethorn area, that cut through, whatever it is, because it's in South Carolina. And I'm confused because I'm not really sure of the road. That shows you how much it's secret. So I thought, and any other thing that in counseling with Mayor Colino, well, yeah, if you do that, what's happening is going to drive everybody onto Joe Carr and then out onto Marvin School Road. But I thought to myself, well, yeah, but there's a roundabout there and it keeps it flowing. Then dovetailing everything together, I thought, you know what? If traffic went down Joe Carr and now we're looking at these different crosswalks, you know what? We're, we're going to make this a town that is going to be really undesirable to drive through. If you go one way, right turn only. If you go down Joe Carr, you're going to wind up having all sorts of crosswalks and everything. And it may push everybody onto Providence or onto Ray Road to basically avoid Marvin. So trying to figure out, and being very proactive, and trying to figure out, how do we control this? That is my discussion and suggestion. Now, the solution ultimately would be possibly, because this is needed to, if we're going to talk about 25 mile an hour roads, my suggestion is that the, the one thing you can get out of this is if we're not going to do that, if in this discussion, if that's a bad idea, well, at least at the very minimum, let's reduce the traffic to 25 miles an hour in front of the Village Hall and Banks Church from roundabout to the intended roundabout. At least slow that. And now that we have officers out there, kind of give them the high sign to go ahead and go out there with a radar gun as opposed to being on Joe Carr Road. I really want to make Marvin undesirable to cut through. And I'm, and that's what is the ultimate. I really want to represent the citizens out there and constituents and say, we have got to head this head on. Because we're going to be looking with whatever, eh, you know, we can change anything we do. But at least for two years, this isn't going to get any better. And by the way, as a side note, our problems could be worse. I was telling Councilwoman Vanderburg that the other day I had to do some rare, I had to do some business and actually get out in public. And I went down Providence Road from Bonds Church. And I actually headed into Waxahaw 1:30 in the afternoon on a Monday. I will tell you that it was bumper to bumper from the Ace Hardware all the way into downtown Waxahaw. So this, this traffic is getting even worse, all the way around in Union County. Specifically, that was my suggestion. Discussion is, what do you think about the idea of following up on this particular memo? Doing a right turn only? And if not, at the very least, can we at least do 25 miles an hour from the roundabout to the intended roundabout? That might just slow things a little bit and make it undesirable. Again, I like the idea about the signs that, you know, it might have, you know, just, just welcoming people as they, I mean, to the area. Anyway, that's my discussion of bringing that up.
I can tell you from our discussions on PRG that getting speed limits lowered on state roads is a difficult sell. We've been trying for a while to get Marvin Road reduced from 45 to 35. DOT is standing the ground on that. And this is a state road out here and it's going to be a similar fight with them on that. So, and, and my, my first knee-jerk response of redirecting traffic onto Joe Carr, which is already heavily traveled and we have a bunch of pedestrians traversing. This is why we're talking about these crosswalks, because we've had a fatality there. I think increasing the traffic on Joe Carr would be, I don't think that's a viable option. What I do agree with you is, is that I would like to see some way to make it less desirable to drive through Marvin. Because from my observations, living on Waxahaw Marvin Road and watching this traffic, we have had an increase of probably 15 to 20% on Waxahaw Marvin Road since the traffic circles have been put in place. Because prior to that, there was a backup all the way up to past Mr. Zimmer's driveway. I mean, almost up into the curb every morning because of the three-way stop. So now traffic flows very quickly through there very easily. People are using it more. I don't know, I can't offer a great solution. I've been racking my brain about this for, for the last, I don't know, four or five years, trying to figure out a way to do it. And I don't, I don't know what's a good solution. What would be, my ideal solution would be to, to have this business center district in place and dropping the speed limit and owning this stretch of road between roundabout and roundabout. So we can control the traffic. We can slow it down to even 20 miles an hour out here. Like Waxahaw does, they control 75 through downtown at 20 miles per hour. They control 16 at 20 miles per hour. And they heavily police it. And people do drive slower now.
Can we make that request to DOT? I mean, I, I don't think it hurts to at least make the request and be like, listen.
I don't think so either because we've got leverage. The fact that they pulled that roundabout from us.
Right.
They, they have to play into this thing. The other suggestion I also have is the fact of, remember we discussed, since we're talking about Joe Carr, see, this is all dovetailing, and I think we put this together. Since we were talking about Joe Carr and talking about crosswalks, what about reintroducing the crosswalk from Innisbrook over to Work Cliff? To connect Innisbrook to, you know, basically the, I guess, the Firethorn community with off-parks and stuff? Putting a road hump or something in there, maybe? I don't think a road hump. I don't know if they're going to go for that. Putting in a crosswalk and making it difficult.
Yeah, I think, I think that that's a, that's a for sure conversation for Park Truck and Greenway to continue to have. I do like the idea of at least requesting the 25 miles an hour. I doubt we'll get it, but I think we request it. And, and, and can we, can we make a move to request from DOT to own?
To what?
To own from future roundabout to completed roundabouts? Can we make that request?
I, I think, I think we could start with, that would be the ultimate goal. But until we have a funding source for that, because you got to remember 17,000 cars, 16,000 cars are coming.
I know, but then we can put, we can put in road humps. We can slow the traffic down. I mean, it doesn't cost us to take over the roads, correct?
Yeah, and the thing about this, Joe, and to remind you, is that we're talking about a different tax district here as we build this, which could then help in funding the maintenance. We know we're going to have a high volume of traffic through here. And we know that we're going to have to have some improvements for this, this village center district, which is going to be at a commercial tax rate, if you will. So it's, it's one of those things that could go hand in hand here. But I think if, the only way that I can see is viable to be able to control traffic through Marvin and deter some of this traffic is to make it very slow through here and then force the crap out of it.
And I think if we own it, we can put in our own road humps.
Right, if we own it, we can do whatever we want. And I think that's really the best option.
Can you guys look into that, about what it's going to take to do that? I mean, because that's the ultimate goal, right? And, and if we really want to start to turn people from coming through Marvin, then let's like start that process now.
So from roundabout to intended?
Correct.
Yes, that's, I mean, that's, it's, that's going to be, that's going to be your big deterrent.
All three roundabouts, the road between all three roundabouts.
Correct, yes.
Which is what I mentioned a long time ago.
Oh, I know, I think it's, I think it's great.
I was just more concerned with the funding source. In commercial, if you're looking at retail sales, you got to remember that all goes to Monroe. Unless you have a specific tax that goes to Marvin, that anybody that builds in this village district, that would, you know, go to that. But then, you know, you got to be careful what you're saying. You don't want to get
We're going to be here for a while.
You don't want to get people, you, you want to deter people from coming to downtown. But in the same breath, you want to encourage some sort, I mean, where these businesses will survive, you know, I mean
Oh, and they will, if they're, if they're coming, then, then they'll, then, what we wanted to deter is to cut through. Of the trucks and the, they're not stopping for lunch at the sandwich shop, but, you know.
Yeah, in fact, if, if anything else, my personal opinion is that with the village district, I think that itself is another, its selling point is, it's going to be such a helter-skelter for somebody to cut through.
Yeah.
Because stopping, that itself is like another layer on top of what you can do now.
Agreed. So I, I think, I think if we can see what that process is going to look like, ask if we can lower the speed limit to 25. I still don't like the right in, right out, sorry. I just think it's going to be more, you're going to be forcing that traffic onto other, already congested roads. But I would like to, to put out there, and if you guys can look into this as well, somebody has suggested a temporary three-way stoplight at that corner. I don't think it's viable. Because I think the queue's going to be too long, but I know, I feel like there was a study done. If we could just get the results from that.
No, that was my suggestion, but it would be a
It's like a wonky four-way light. Like, it would be crazy.
Well, so what it would be, what my idea was with that is to get, is to be able to safely control traffic from a person. You know, the Sheriff's Department was out there and they direct traffic. Well, it would be the same way, except that it would be remote. So you would have just a temporary on-trailer type of traffic light, controlling traffic during peak hours. And that would be the only time. Otherwise, it would be just flashing yellow, flashing red. So it would be just like it is. So, it would be just like it is. But it would only be for just high-traffic times where we could do, possibly do a contractor versus a deputy at maybe a, a lower cost. And it would be much safer to have a light instead of somebody standing in the middle of the road.
Can we look at?
Yeah.
We talked about forty-six thousand dollars a year to have somebody who substitute a light, you know, to patrol. Out there. So, uh, I think, I think we need to look into this.
What did DOT say?
They won't do it because of the site distance of the car.
Oh, they won't do it?
I can ask them again, but I've already asked them once.
All right, well, you, will you ask them again?
What was that, Christina, you asking to do what?
For, for, to do a stoplight there, um.
Look that way.
Sorry. To do a, to do a stoplight and they basically told me that because of the site distance around the corner, they, they wouldn't allow it.
Okay.
Because the, the approach, there has to be a certain approach.
Oh, the length of the approach coming around the corner.
So, what about signage?
What kind of signage?
Well, you know.
There's a stoplight here?
Signal ahead. There's signal ahead signs everywhere where there's limited site distance on the approach.
There's flashing lights on signal ahead too.
Right. And, and what's the difference whether you come around a corner and there's a cop in the middle of the road with the flashing lights? I mean, you still have to have, it's, you still come up on it with a limited site distance, so.
I say, just ask.
There's gotta be a way to do it.
Let's just ask and then we'll find out what they come up with.
I, I think it gets to, and I don't know how long this could be before we get that roundabout in there. But to your point, if we did anything, it's just every so many minutes, I mean, they could do their own study on this and figure out when the car is back up to a certain point, maybe where Innisbrook is. And then, it allows traffic to pull out on to Newtown Road and stopping both sides. And then, it just goes back and you're, you know, it's, I, I, it, it's hard to tell, but it's.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I think a traffic light would, could work temporarily if you were to somehow figure out. I, or go back to the instruction guy we talked about. Instruction people, it's instruction problems.
All right, well, Joe, Christina's gonna look into it. I would like to take a five-minute recess, um, for us to get our lunch order together and to take a restroom break. So, if I could get a motion for, uh, recess?
Are you sending lunch here?
Yes, we are. It'll be there in five hours, Joe. All right, I need a motion to recess.
Domino's coming to each of our residences.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're at recess.